Uh. So. Semantics, people semantics. Hi, good evening all, welcome to this city council regular meeting of the city of San Juan Bautista. It is six o'clock. Uh, calling the meeting to order. Councilmember Freeman, can you please start us in the pledge of allegiance?
Praise the Lord. Praise allegiance to the Lord. And thank God, and to the Republic for a wish of saints, for an invasion under our will as well, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Here.
Mayor Protim? Jordan?
Here.
Mayor Frios? Is absent today. Thank you. Uh, presentations, today we have a presentation by, uh, about the San Benito County Tobacco Education Program. Um. Uh, is Crystal Ortiz here from the Health Education? Hi, thank you, welcome. Uh, come on up. Uh, I have a different agenda. Thank you very much. Uh, I apologize if we can take one second. Uh, do I have public comment on items not on the agenda? Uh, and you all have three minutes. I have one speaker card. Uh, Danny Barrera? Thank you very much, welcome Danny.
Thank you, good for being here today with you. My name is Danny Barrera, I'm the executive director of Povens de Antonio, we are the senior center in in, um, Hollister, San Antonio County, and we're here for San Juan Bautista. Uh, yes, my name is Danny Barrera Junior, and I'm deeply honored to stand before you today as the new director of Povens de Antonio, senior centers. I'm here today to just bring awareness and gently remind you that we need that openness and safe place for our seniors to gather, receive valuable resources like meals, transportation, and care paper support and other resources. I am filled with the best pride knowing that the incredible legacy of service our organization holds within our community. For half a century, Povens de Antonio has been a steadfast pillar of our, um, pillar of support in our community. Um, for our, for our, for our coming seniors. And for almost forty-five years, we've been relentless.
Sorry about that. So. So I'm just here to, uh, just bring that awareness that Povens is here for our seniors, and we have been for forty-five years. I'm grateful and, and, and very, very, uh, impressed with the tremendous support that the city of San Juan Bautista has shown Povens by allowing us to use the community center to serve meals to our seniors. Um, but that's not the only thing we do, we do transport our seniors throughout the county, not just in the county, but we send, uh, we transport our seniors all the way out to the Stanford Medical Center, out to Fresno, up to parts of, um, Carmel and, and Monterey. And we have, uh, a great reputation here with our, with our seniors, and I just wanted to bring more awareness and more, uh, reminders that we are here. And I want to encourage, um, the council and the community members here today to call my office, find, find out more about what we do and how we've been doing it. Uh, my predecessor is Pauline Valdivia, and she, I had the pleasure of moving into her office and finding all of her notes and all of her, all of the pictures and all the things that she's done for our community and, and there's a passion there that I am picking up and moving forward. My job is to, it's, uh, strengthen our, strengthen our programs and expand our reach. There's about ten thousand seniors in this county alone, and my job is to make sure that we reach all of them, that they're receiving the valuable resources that they, that they deserve. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate you guys' support. Uh, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Good evening, um, Patricia Baines, I'm a business owner.
Can you hear me? Hi, welcome, yes.
I just wanted to briefly comment on the fact that I, um, am a member of the SJB Business Association, a nonprofit, who is working on bringing two events to the city this year. Um, all of my paperwork was filled out last month and presented and fees paid and checks cashed. But I just found out tonight that we're not on the agenda as we had expected, so I just wanted to say I did my part. And, um, it's very disconcerting when the ball gets dropped, and this is not the first time, but I just wanted to comment on the fact that, um, the inner workings need to do a little better, thank you.
Thank you. We have, that's okay, do we have any other public comment? None in chambers, but we do have one hand raised. Thank you. Ms. Tinkersley, you have three minutes. Hi, Margot, welcome. Margot, can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Okay, I just wanted to say, um, how wonderful it is to have the signage up on the side roads where there's to be no left turns onto one fifty-six from Bixby, Lucy Brown, and Flint Road between the hours of three and seven PM, Monday through Saturday. Um, whoever finally got that passed, I just want to say thank you. It's, um, I live in Hollister, and of course I have Margot's ice cream parlor here. And when I would leave town, sometimes as early as three or three-thirty, it would literally take me forty-five to fifty minutes to get home. And, um, it now takes me twenty, twenty-two minutes to get home. And so I just want to give a shout out and say thank you to everybody who helped make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing no other hands raised, Madam Mayor? Thank you. Uh, moving on to presentations, Crystal, sorry, come on up. Uh, this is the San Benito County Tobacco Education Program.
Hi, everyone, good evening, my name's Chris Ortiz, I am the project coordinator from the San Benito County Tobacco Education Program.
And my name is Javier Perez, I'm the Coalition and Community Engagement Coordinator.
And today we're doing a brief, um, educational presentation on the indirect, um, causes of tobacco product usage, mostly second-hand and third-hand smoke. Um, but before we get into the presentation, I wanted to give a brief, um, background about the program itself. The Tobacco Education Program was founded in nineteen ninety-one. Um, some of the three major accomplishments that the program has completed back in twenty fifteen, it was able to pass a tobacco-free pharmacy, um, policy in twenty nineteen here in San Juan Bautista. Um, it was also able to pass a smoke-free outdoor dining ordinance, and then as of recent in twenty twenty-two, a flavors ban was also passed in all of San Benito County. Okay, and so we just want to preface this by saying that when we refer to tobacco products, we're solely only referring to commercial tobacco, um, such as cigarettes, cigareos, flavored tobacco, jewels, um, flavored tobacco products, but we are not referring to traditional tobacco, which is, um, primarily used by native and indigenous communities, which is used for medicinal and sacred purposes. Um, so a lot of times when we're referring to the exposure to, um, tobacco smoke or tobacco products, a lot of the time we only think about like the user themselves and how it directly impacts them. Uh, but today we just want to focus on the indirect, um, exposure that it can cause to non-smokers. So when we're talking about second-hand smoke, uh, we want to emphasize the point that any brief exposure to any tobacco smoke can lead to a potential, um, increase in harm to your body and other different health effects. And the way that can look into your body would include in things like coronary heart disease, stroke, and even lung cancer. Um, it's not only exclusive to lung cancer, it can virtually affect any part of your body, starting from the top of your head all the way to your feet. Um, and then furthermore, um, second-hand smoke does not only solely, um, affect adults, it even, um, can reach to our younger age children and infants, leading to things like SIDS, sudden infant death syndrome, um, respiratory infections, ear infections, asthma, it just increases the likelihood for them to develop these health issues. And now leading to third-hand smoke, so third-hand smoke, um, we noticed at least in our time doing our outreach presentations in our community, um, it's not really known by our community members when we ask like, what is third-hand smoke? A lot of times, community members aren't too sure about it, so we really want to emphasize this point tonight. So third-hand smoke is the exposure, um, that is inside an enclosed area, so, um, third-hand smoke is made up of pollutants that is, um, left behind and settles indoors. And, um, it includes different types of products, including nicotine, but also cancer-causing agents such as, um, formaldehyde, um, et cetera. And the, the reason why this is so concerning and dangerous is because, uh, primarily any type of, uh, cleaning household product is virtually too impossible to remove this, uh, the way that second-hand smoke or smoke has penetrated the area, so, um, what kind of areas does it affect? It could include wood, since it's a porous, um, substance, and even more so fabric behind maybe the, uh, couches or any fabric inside your home. Um, and so, um, this is posing a potential health risk even to our younger age children and infants, since they tend to, you know, use a lot of their hands and put it towards their mouth, so they can indirectly be exposed to these harmful substances by absorbing it that way. And I just, I don't know if you guys can see the presentation with like a little couch or in there, um, we'd just like to illustrate that because it says when you smoke at home, your home smokes back. So I'm going to pass it over to Javier, who's going to talk more about San Benito County, uh, facts.
Good evening, council, how's it going? Um, if we can go on to the next slide, we're going to talk about the stats, um, from the state compared to San Benito County. So if we look at the first stat from twenty twenty from the Ask Chis survey, we can see that San Benito County has eight point eight percent of tobacco users, um, when compared to the state, that's about six point seven percent. Um, we fast forward a couple of years to the county health rankings, we can see that San Benito County residents are still using tobacco products, and that is upticking to about twelve percent. And then if we look over to the state, um, average, we can see that also has gone up nine percent. So for the users and the red, and San Benito County residents, we can see that per year that it's increased about one percent there. Um, and then I kind of want to switch gears to the last statistic, so we can see that in this California Healthy Kids survey, about twenty-three percent of eleventh graders have tried vaping or used vaping-related, uh, products. So that's not taking into account for middle school, that's not taking into account for freshmen, uh, seniors and other grades that are not listed. But I want to point out this vape ward that we had brought. You can see, um, I know some of the audience may not be able to, but I want to leave this out here for others to see that these are confiscated from Hollister High School. They come to us on a quarterly basis, and they give us these confiscated items. So this is only a fraction of what we have back at the office. So as you can see, there's a lot of different colors, a lot of different shapes, they all depend on the same, they all are different. Um, this is just to highlight how discreet and incognito these kids could be with a vaping-related tissues. And to circle back to second-hand, uh, smoke exposure, how these kids can easily throw one in their pocket, take it with them to the classroom, or even to the restroom, they take their restroom breaks, and then they, they vape, and then unfortunately, they think it's just a smell, it goes away, but they get, the students that are walking in get exposed to that second-hand exposure. And then, um, this video should play, but on the left you'll see a little tam where it says SBC opioid task force. But what it's supposed to show is a video of some students going to this health fair that was hosted by Enzor High School. And we were lucky enough to be invited to their little, um, health fair event. So there was a lot of different organizations and public health programs there to teach the kids, um, some health-related matters, but for us, for tobacco education, we wanted to instill that awareness and spread some education because, as you saw with these vapes, some of these kids, they might be vaping, they may not even realize what, um, addiction that they're forming, or maybe they're on the fence about it, they see their friends and peers trying it out, and maybe they're curious about it. Or maybe there's that one student that knows about it, just wants to see what, what's going on and just stay on that straight path. And then on the right, you can see right here, we have Smoke Point and Bliss blends. So we conducted a survey back in December, and we went out to local restaurants right here within San Juan, San Juan Bautista. And we, uh, conducted a little survey to get some information and gather some research to see how second-hand smoke and tobacco exposure has affected their roles. And then next slide, please.
And so we just wanted to brief, um, highlight those two points because we really want to highlight like the committee engagement that we want to take from, um, our public health department and really just reach the community where they're at, especially the kids in high school settings, reach them under lunchtime activities or after school, and talk firsthand to restaurant owners and staff and community members to really get their firsthand experience of how second-hand exposure, any type of tobacco-related exposure has affected them in their workplace and in their, um, job experience here in the city. Um, and so if you guys have any additional questions, you can reach us at our contact information listed above. Um, and we really want to thank you for your time, for listening to our presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much. If you want to turn that around and like, uh, um, move it maybe up here more or, or back there in the back? Oh, that right there was perfect, thank you. Um, I don't know if you can get a shot of that on Zoom or not. Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for that presentation, uh, questions from the council, uh, councilmember Freeman?
Um, no, thank you for the excellent presentation, I really appreciate it. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I hope you even do a better job in cutting down the smoke.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Morris Lopez. Uh, if one of you folks want to stay up here, or both of you stay up here, and comments from the council, and then potentially from, uh, Zoom or the audience, thanks.
Thank you so much for the presentation, it was excellent. I have a question, and just your opinion, or you may know the answer. What do you think is the reason for the tick-up in San Benito County, but then it also correlates with the state tick-up? But it's interesting that our rate is a lot higher than the state average.
That's a great question.
Any ideas?
You know, a lot of times, based on how with, will we do other convenience with other locally agencies, agencies in other counties that are dealing with similar experiences? Um, there's just a different amounts of reasons why, a lot of times it can be lack of recreational opportunities for either the younger folks, or maybe it's just higher incidence of stress levels, um, higher rates of, um, you know, mental health issues, a lot of people might need, uh, might tend to use certain substances or products to tend, um, to cope. Um, some, some, some of those are some of the things that have been listed, um, not only pertaining to us, but in other locations as well.
Last question, are they, like, the younger kids, are, I'm assuming that they're not able to go and buy in a brick and mortar? So are they getting the stuff online?
So right now currently, the, their flavors ban or any type of flavored tobacco product or any tobacco product itself should not be sold to anyone under the age of twenty-one, each location, each tobacco retailer should have a TR, which is tobacco retail license for them to sell. It, they should be checking IDs for every single individual. Um, and so moving forward, something with our program that we're working with code enforcement is to complete a tobacco youth decoy operation. So we're, that's another way for us to kind of see how many of our retailers are actually carting all the individuals going into their establishments. Um, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Sebastian?
Hello, um. I, I remember when I was a kid, you know, the Joe Camel, all that was cool and everything, and there was a, a big push to, to target, you know, decreased smoking efforts around that kind of thing. All those things look like friggin toys, like.
Yeah. It's scary.
Is, is there any effort going into like, you know, federally, nationally to, to, you know, change the, the look and, and appeal of any of these devices? It's like, I got to imagine it's not, cigarettes isn't, isn't the thing, that's not the, the cool thing, that, that's been pretty well debunked. But like, like.
I thought they were highlighters.
Yeah, half of them look like highlighters, key fob.
Key fobs.
So, glad you might bring that up, we've, in our program, we actually did, on a side note, we did a YouTube video or like a reel, where we did like a what's in your backpack, and so we were able to mix up, um, tobacco products and everyday products and have people see if they could distinguish the difference, and in the comments or people would see it, they're like, I can't tell the difference. It looks like a highlighter, it looks like a key fob, it looks like a charging port, so, um, the way the tobacco industry tends to target, especially the younger users, they do tend to, you know, camouflage it as good tasting flavors, and they put cartoons that kids might recognize, they really want to target them really younger. Um, so moving forward, there's been talk about that to see how they can reduce the marketing and terms of that. Um, I know in the past, at least now for even the cigarettes, they're supposed to put, they put like the really graphic pictures on there and statistics according to what can happen when you're smoking the cigarettes. So we kind of are hoping that moving forward, the marketing and the branding of these products would then be reduced.
Thank you, yeah, I was taken aback by the key fob. Um. You mentioned something about carting, so this program for the county went into effect. John, you and I were on the council when it first came up. Um, and there was a concerted effort to go around, uh, businesses who sell them, um, including businesses who sell cigars. Um, so is there the potential or the possibility of doing this on an annual basis, rather than every five years or, or whatever?
Yeah, and so in our, in our scope of work and what we're, um, granted to do, our inner funds, we do them, um, every two years. Um, however, we have the opportunity to work with code enforcement and have them apply for a DOJ grant where they can get funds through there for, to have fund for officers or code enforcement officers, to hopefully work with us in public health where we can round up the youth, the eighteen to twenty-year-olds, and then they can help with enforcement part. Um, and we would love to, if that could be an annual thing, just so we're making sure everyone's in compliance, and we can, um, and we try every year to do an educational visit to, uh, retailers, um, to provide them with the most up-to-date fact sheets and information on any, um, updates on policies, as well as any other fact sheets on what type of products they can and cannot sell.
Awesome, thank you very much. Don't go away. Uh, questions, comments, concerns from Zoom or chambers? No speaker cards received, did no hands raised.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can you please come to the podium so that everybody can hear you? Thank you, and state your name for the public?
Yes, hi there, my name is Ramona Hill, thank you very much. My question is about chewing tobacco. And are you addressing that, and is, do you know if that's included in any of those statistics, the use? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Currently, we're just, um, at least for this presentation, we just focus on second-hand smoke, so anything indirectly related to that, but we do have a lot of statistics as well on chewing tobacco. Um, more so on a, on California level, not really to San Benito County as of yet. Um, but hopefully moving forward, we'll partake in surveys that hopefully can get a better grasp, at least for San Benito County specific. Um, but we do have in our office, if you're, um, interested in knowing a little bit more about, um, chewing tobacco and more information on that, we have fact sheets and infographics on that as well. And we do try to be present in the community and hopefully do more over here in San Juan Bautista and reach aromas, different areas. Um, and we'll always have type of fact sheets for that as well.
Thank you very much. Uh, back to the council again, councilmember Freeman? Councilmember Morris Lopez? Councilmember Sebastian? Thank you very much for the presentation, we appreciate it, thank you. Uh, action item, it's added to the agenda, we need a roll call vote on whether we're going to to add the, uh, action item, the memorandum of understanding between the county of San Benito and the cities of San Juan Bautista and Hollister for the establishment and administration of a non-exclusive permit system for the collections and diverse diversion of solid waste.
So, Madam Mayor, um, if I can explain real quick, um, this came to us as a package in January, the revisions to the city's ordinance that are required, uh, for our exclusive, uh, non-exclusive, uh, we have an exclusive franchise for solid waste, and this is for the non-exclusive permit system for those providers outside of our, outside of the franchise. And so we cooperate with it, with the city and county on this program, and they, they came to us to update the, uh, the program and also to present this MOU whereby they would administer it for us, which is very helpful. Work with the state of California and so forth, and we do have members from Integrated Waste here today, uh, should the council have any questions on this matter?
Thank you. So we need a roll call on whether or not we're going to hear this? Thank you. Thank you, may I have a roll call, please? Uh, sorry, can I have a motion to add this to the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Uh.
Seconded.
Thank you, motion made by councilmember Freeman, seconded by councilmember Sebastian to add this to the agenda. Uh, may I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan? Yes. Hey, it's been a whole month since I've done this. Forgive me. Thanks. Uh, okay, uh, public hearing, an ordinance of the city of San Juan Bautista amending chapter five refuse collection and recycling of the municipal code to update non-exclusive franchise agreements for the collection of solid wastes to comply with SB one three eight three. City manager.
Oh, we're loading the slides now, and we have a quick presentation from, uh, the county integrated waste management. And, uh, then they'll be here to take our questions. Here we go.
Do I direct you to move the slides?
Yeah.
Okay.
She'll move them for you.
All right, we're up, hang on one second. Uh, okay, we're ready?
Hold on.
Hello, it's me. That's okay, it's yours, he can do whatever.
I know, he can.
Use your time.
Again, and I have my, my phone on focus. I'm sorry. Good evening, council, I'm Catherine Ramirez, staff analyst with the county of San Benito's Integrated Waste Management. Selena Stotler, um, would love to have been here today, but she is currently at the city of Hollister's meeting, also presenting, um, the
Meeting also presenting on the non-exclusive franchise permit. Today with me, I have Rose Radford on Zoom and she is our solid waste consultant with R three consulting. Can we go to the next slide, please? That's not the presentation. That's the one I gave to you. Yeah, I did. I sent it to you. Please sit by while we get the correct. Presentation. No worries. It's really an honor to be here. First time. Yay, welcome. We appreciate you. Oh, thank you. That's one of my children. So I have it on focus, but they can call in. Okay. No one else can cover. Hey, mom, I see you on the Zoom. He, he might be watching. He teaches in the middle school and he probably saw the vape stuff and it's a big problem for him as a teacher.
What a brand new wave of. In the misinformation and dis-education about it, about. It being okay now, and it's different from cigarettes and you don't think it's just funny and cool. My first experience with a vape was years ago at a restaurant in San Jose. And I'm asthmatic, so I already can't stand any of it, anything really, do me not being able to breathe properly. And there's a couple behind us and they're like, this, smoking in the restaurant? And then ask the waitress and she, he's not smoking. Really looks like. Oh, it's not, it's not a cigarette. I don't care what. And they were like, oh, we can't ask them to stop. It was like. I hate to do it, but on the tip. Don't let people smoke in your restaurant.
That's a good tip. All right, thank you very much. Here we go. Let me move on to the next. It's okay. Can we move on to the next? Thank you. Thank you. To begin today's presentation, I'd like to first share a little bit about the non-exclusive. Hauling permit system that we're proposing and a bit about the current agreement system that we have. This is all in relation to the solid waste collection, to solid waste collections. Efforts to assist the Integrative Waste Regional Management Agency with mandatory state reporting. Requirements through a permit system. Before I start presenting about the permit system, we recognize there is likely a need for some background. On the integrated, on integrated ways, because it's been some time since integrated ways has come before this council. So who is integrated waste? We're a division within the county of San Benito's Resource Management Agency. And we are furthermore a regional agency under the nineteen ninety-five joint powers agreement. Between the cities of Hollister, San Juan Batista, and the county of San Benito. This agency with the county as lead was formed as part of a united effort to reduce. The amount of solid waste disposed in permitted disposal. Facilities and to comply with California's Integrated Waste Management Act A B nine three nine. In two thousand and six, the regional agency members entered into a cost-sharing agreement. To establish cost-sharing to fund the administration of integrated waste. Which is based on population size and this agreement further established the integrated waste local task force. Which acts as an advisory commute committee reviewing quarterly expenditures, annual budgets. And, and the annual budget. And Councilmember John Freeman is your delegate to this committee, and he is also the chair of the local task force. We move to the next slide. Thank you. These code amendments do not impact the exclusive contract recology holds with the cities of Hollister, San Batista. And the county of San Benito. Instead, the non-exclusive franchise agreement, which is what we refer to as N E F A. Is the competitive program that grants haulers the non-exclusive right. To collect solid waste in temporary roll-off debris service boxes within city limits. By way of illustration, let's just say that the recent storms caused a resident damage to their property. Which, and it caused a, a significant amount of debris in need of disposal. This resident would likely utilize a roll-off delivered by an approved hauler to their property. For placement of the material damaged by the storm, as this would not fit in their regular recology bids used for weekly collection service. The resident has their choice of haulers from our approved hauler list administered by I W M. All approved haulers have agreements with the county and these agreements require the haulers to pay the city. A franchise fee based on total gross revenue of the service provided. For the city of San Batista, resident, the residential, for your residential customers, it's ten percent, a ten percent fee. And for commercial and industrial customers, it is a fifteen percent fee. The current N E F A process between the county and cities to monitor hauler's solid waste collection has been. In effect for several decades without revisions. Our goal with these code revisions and M O U between the regional agency members. Is to formalize our relationship and to streamline the overall process for staff and for the haulers. These revisions will further our compliance with A B nine three nine and the newer S B thirteen eighty-three regulations and reporting requirements. So we're gonna go on to the next slide. And this is just a slide of discretionary mandatory and voluntary areas that um. That we can go over if you have any questions later. And if we could just move to the next slide. Thank you. So who needs, who needs N E F A? As mentioned, there are currently monthly reporting and payment requirements for the haulers. And I W M reviews the monthly reports and administers applicable, applicable payments to the city. We'll go to the next slide. Currently, we do have a rule, a rule exemption for S B thirteen eighty-three. It is slated to expire in December of twenty twenty-six. The proposed permit language anticipates these changes. And there are also existing reporting requirements outside of S B thirteen eighty-three. That are required now for all three jurisdictions. And through this permitting system, we will be better equipped to report on behalf of all of the agencies. We'll also better understand how much trash and recycling we're collecting. And I'm going to turn slide seven over, the next slide, over to Rose, who is on Zoom.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Uh, so I'm Rose Radford with R three consulting. Thanks for having me virtually. Um. So, we assisted I W M in uh, compiling the uh, uh, adjustments to the permit system. And transforming it into uh, from the N E F A system to the hauling permit. So what you're looking at today are. Some minor revisions to your municipal code that accommodate that wording adjustment. And then essentially the uh, memorandum of understanding that sort of codifies the existing program that you already have in place with I W M. Um, and then uh, authorizes I W M to administer a new permit. So the permit itself. Is uh, is an update to the original document and includes some additional um, that language around, uh, for example indemnification. And insurance requirements, but also uh, goes a little bit beyond that um, in terms of. Requirements on uh, specifically reporting. Um, so for your purposes here, and Catherine described it really well, is, is, we're really talking about. Um, service performed by haulers on a temporary, m- m- mostly a temporary on-call basis. Um, so this isn't going to affect operations in, within your jurisdiction very dramatically. Uh, but again, this is a permit that will be in place countywide, including within your jurisdiction. And it, it does include additional reporting, which is gonna assist uh, the county in their reporting to the state. I think that's everything for that slide.
Thank you. The effort to move away from an agreement and towards a permitting process has been evolving since the beginning of twenty twenty-two to the present. During this period, we updated the local task force at five of their meetings. Through presentations and have sought their input and direction. We also recently sat down with your city manager and legal counsel to get their input on the M O U. Code revisions and the draft permit. In December, we sent a letter and an email to all approved haulers of the anticipated changes and to invite them to attend. The December fourteenth local task force meeting to learn more and also have the opportunity to provide public comment. At the December meeting of the L T F. The L T F provided direction to staff to move forward with a recommendation to the cities and county to bring forward. The M O U and the ordinance changes. In February, we sent out another letter to haulers and invited them to this city council meeting. So they may have the opportunity to hear what we have brought before you this evening and to provide public comment. And then can we move to the next slide? Thanks. And so we have already met. The county of San Benito is slated to have their second meeting on, on. The M O U approval and the ordinance on February twenty-seventh. Uh, Hollister, see if Hollister is having their second meeting tonight. And then we will have our second meeting with you on. March, I don't wanna say a long date, March nineteenth. After this meeting, if you approve, if you approve this. And then um, we will be providing, if this is approved tonight, we will be providing. The haulers with an agreement termination letter, term, yes, and we have to do that. By March second, because we have to meet a hundred and twenty-day notice requirement. We will be providing haulers um, with workshops and, and giving them as much assistance as they need. And um, we will. We, we are hoping that the new hauling permit goes into effect on July one of twenty twenty-four. And then the next slide. So today, we respectfully recommend that the council receive a presentation from staff. And the solid waste consultant R three that includes the first reading of the ordinance transitioning from a non-exclusive franchise. Uh, agreement to hauling permits and also adopt the memorandum of understanding between. Integrated Waste Management's regional agency members for the establishment of a hauler permit system. And I'm open for any questions. Thank you very much. Uh, questions, comments, concerns from the council? Councilmember Freeman?
Thank you, Catherine, for the great report. I appreciate it. Been through it before, so no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez?
I'm a little confused. Is this still a public hearing on this item? Because I hear the young.
Yes, it's public hearing.
Okay, so this is not, we are not gonna go to enact any decisions.
Not at, not at this moment.
Okay, just wanna be clear on that. So I did jot down a few questions. I actually now know what the acronym I W M is. Integrated Waste Management. Um, and then I had a question about, does the hauler permit system? Have to do with the possible expansion of the future of John Smith landfill expansion?
No, this has to do with the new law, um, S B thirteen eighty-three.
Okay, I looked those up extensively before the meeting a couple of days ago, and they have to do with the state of California. You can correct me if I'm wrong, um, getting the public to recycle, reuse, all of that.
And you should know that the city, you should be very proud. That the city of San Batista, the city of Hollister, and just the county in general is, is just. Ahead of, ahead of the game. Uh, with, with this, with this, I live in Selena's and we're not doing half the stuff that you're all doing. And so be proud of, of that, that you've been doing this already for a couple of years, since twenty eighteen.
Okay, thank you. So I, John probably knows all of this. He's the chair. So, um. Excuse my naivety, but what is, so right now what we have is, um, we can do business with independent haulers. And when you say haulers, those are people that are actually hauling our trash, the big truck drivers or?
So it's, they have to be approved. They have to have a permit with, or an, an agreement with the county, or they, they're not hauling legally. So they have, because we have recology and recology holds, um, the exclusive franchise. They hold the exclusive franchise to pick up all of, within the city limits, the trash. They do not. Have the exclusive franchise for roll-offs. And that's what we're talking about today. And so. Not just anyone can come in and do that. They have to be approved by, by the county in order to do that, because they have to pay fees. So they, we, you, you, the city generates revenue from this. And so we want them to be a part of this system and to be approved by us.
What's to stop, say, if someone, a personal um, citizen. Has a construction company, so they have access to large dump trucks. What's to stop that individual from hauling their own rollover trash or debris?
Well, if they're a business, then they, well, if we find out about it, then we go and we, we talk to them. Right? And a citizen can take, has a right to take their trash. Um, over, or their refuse over to the landfill. Um, but we also. Work very closely with the landfill and if somebody is hauling illegally, um, they will call us. So we have that good relationship with them.
So education and some enforcement, or at least education on the front end?
And the haulers will tell on other, other haulers, other companies. We have that going on a lot. And we follow up on your behalf.
Okay. Thank you.
We're good. Sorry. Councilmember Sebastian?
Um, the only question I had was not, sorry, everything that you said made sense and I. Also looked up the S B thirteen eighty-three. All that makes a lot of sense. It, it is awesome that we're trying to get out ahead of things and not be. Behind. Um, my question is more procedural for us. This is already listed as a public hearing item. Why do we have to vote to hear it?
I'm sorry, uh, Councilmember, there's two, there's two items listed in this slide. And uh, we did not provide the memorandum of understanding originally with the agenda. So we presented the memorandum of understanding tonight. The uh, the change in the ordinances, it takes two readings. So the first reading would be tonight. If, if approved, and then the second reading would be at our March meeting. So one is an ordinance, eventing the ordinance, and the other is simply approving the M O U for them to administer on behalf of the city.
So we're ignoring this request to waive the first reading? And hold a public hearing? Okay.
We're good. Thank you. Uh, I have no questions. Thank you. Um, I'd like to now open it to a public hearing. Do we have any? Don't go anywhere. Do we have any questions from? Chambers or Zoom? We have one speaker card receipt. Thank you.
Hello, um, good evening, council. I am here on behalf of I W M, but I think I messed up a little bit on my speaker card. I am technically here to give updates on programs, if that's all right to do right now.
Can we wait for that until we get this all cleared up?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Nope, not a problem. Thanks. Uh, do we have anybody on Zoom? No hands raised, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. I'm closing public hearing. Uh.
Can we bring back to the council just for a moment?
Can I go to my next agenda item that says, bringing it back to council members. Thank you very much, Councilmember Freeman.
I, I'd just like to compliment I W M. They're so far ahead of the game. Places like Monterey County, Los Angeles. Uh, are way behind on implosion, implosion, implosion of thirteen eighty-three, which is. Trying to control organics into the landfill, organics. When they decompose, emit methane, which is um. An air pollution, um, you know, um. I'm getting confused tonight. I'm sorry. I have it. Anyway, uh, it's a, a pollutant that. I'm getting confused tonight. I'm sorry. I have it. Anyway, it's a pollutant and ozone depletion chemical and increases global warming. So it's really important to control methane. And we, the state is attempting to do that through thirteen eighty-three, and I think our county and our organization is doing a great job on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Morris Lopez?
No other questions.
Thank you. Council member Sebastian?
Nothing.
Nothing else. Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation.
Do we need a, a motion? For the, for the agreement?
Okay, may I have a motion to accept the MOU? Or MOA?
I'll, I'll move that we accept the memorandum of understanding between the counties of San Benito, San Batista and Hollister for the establishment of a non-exclusive permit system for collection and diversion of solid waste.
Thank you. May I have a second? We have to accept the memorandum of understanding as well. We just got clarification in that. Procedural. We're going through the MOU and the first reading.
Sorry, I'm still very confused.
That's okay. I'll, I'll second it.
This is the first time we're hearing the MOU, right?
The MOU was in our packet, was it not?
I read it, but this is the first time we're talking about it publicly together.
Would you like to have more of a conversation about it, although we've already had a first and a second? How does that work?
What was the question?
There might need to be further discussion on the MOU as this is the first time that we're having a discussion about it, but we've had a motion and a second to the motion. Can we have further discussion on the MOU?
We can suspend the motion while you have further discussion.
Okay. I'm going to suspend the the motion to have further discussion on the MOU. Do you have further discussion on the MOU?
Yes, my questions are still procedural. And so we do not have to have multiple readings or introductions of the MOU. We can just accept it this first time.
That's correct.
Okay.
I have a question. I'm in concurrence with council member Sebastian. I'm a little confused because I thought I assumed and understood this to be a public hearing. And then also, this is a very, it's new to us. Yes, it was in the packet, but it's quite involved. So my question is that, do we have a current MOU that is similar to what we're being presented tonight? Is there any amendments to it, or is it pretty much the same thing that's in place now? And does it involve any fee hikes?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Rose to help me out with this. But we do have an MOU with you currently.
Yeah, so you and the county have several different governing documents between you. So one of them is the joint powers agreement, which deals with most of the the matters between the the agencies. Another is the cost sharing agreement, which discusses the financial side of that arrangement. There is no similar language that as to what we're proposing in this MOU, which is why the way that we're putting it is sort of formalizing that existing relationship of IWM and the county doing administration over this NIFA process. But recall that this is also procedurally very similar to the county's role in administration over your franchise agreement with recology and also the, it's a function that IWM has been performing on your behalf since the NIFA system was first implemented.
And and this is specifically for roll-offs? Correct?
Yeah, so those are the very large dumpsters. It's not like the ones that you can move yourself. You need mechanical equipment, big, huge dumpsters that might be used for mostly construction and cleanup projects.
Go ahead.
So so to rephrase that, we have longstanding existing agreements for the franchise. And this is a new MOU that's formalizing past practices for the non-exclusive uses. And those are the dumpster temporary uses. So we don't have anything in place yet for the non-exclusive uses. So that's, that's any in NIFA. So it's, so that's what's different about this one, council member. I hope that makes sense.
Your question was, is the agreement that we have in our packet, the one that we're voting on tonight, there's no other version? Is that what you're?
That and more specifically, council attorney given. If we have one in place now, what I wanted to know clearly, what is the change in what we have in place now? And also, if this translates, and I think the young lady on Zoom talked about our agreement in general terms of monetary or financial agreement. And that's not listed here. So I asked if that was going to be an increase with this new MOU, any increases?
You're gonna generate, you likely might generate more revenue, but the, the the amount, the ten percent and the fifteen percent is is still in place for, and 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 the city of Hollister only gets five percent and the county of San Benito only gets five percent. This city of San Batista has requested more. And so they, you do. The haulers pay more.
So revenue gathering, but as far as our obligation, you said that there's a bigger body that is overseeing the process or the project, the process or the operation. Are we having to increase what we pay into that service is what I was?
This service, it doesn't, that's, this service generates revenue.
Okay, but we're not having to pay someone that is overdoing the work for us.
You already do.
But I mean, that, so my question is, I'm probably not learning it. Are we having to pay more with this new memorandum of understanding? Is it going to be?
I don't believe so. We're already doing this for you. And we're going to continue to administer IWM. That's part of the cost share agreement. Is that we administer this program for you. We're just formalizing the relationship because it hasn't been formalized.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Back to the motion. A motion was made to formalize this agreement by council member Freeman, seconded by acting mayor Jordan. May I have a roll call, please? Council member Freeman?
Yes.
Council member Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Council member Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And then the second motion is for the first reading of the ordinance. Thank you for the word. May I, may I have a motion?
So moved?
Seconded.
Thank you. Motion made by council member Freeman, seconded by council member Sebastian. May I have a roll call, please? Council member Freeman?
Yes.
Council member Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Council member Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I was just about to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for letting me come back on. With that, I'll just give some updates on our programs.
Sorry. Oh, hi, welcome. Hi. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, yes.
Thanks, sorry.
Hello, council. My name is Lori Tankersley. I am here on behalf of San Benito County Integrated Waste Management. Yeah, to give some updates on our programs, we hosted a cleanup in Hollister on February tenth. We were stationed just at our office in Hollister. We worked together with several community groups and residents and collected over five hundred pounds of trash. We have several cleanups planned around the county for this year. And our next cleanup will be on March twenty-third at Dunn Park from nine AM to twelve PM. And then next, we want to welcome for you guys to join IWM for our first recycle day event, which will be on March thirtieth. We will be stationed at our IWM office in Hollister from nine AM to one PM. We will be accepting household hazardous waste. For more information, visit our website at COSB.us backslash HHW. Next, we are also offering a bulky item recycling and disposal event on March twenty-third and twenty-fourth from nine AM to three PM at the John Smith landfill, where residents can bring up to two bulky items per household at no cost. Residents can call IWM or visit our website to view a list of acceptable items. And that would be at COSB dot U S backslash IWM. And then we also just wanted to say that we are excited to be hosting our annual Earth Day event in San Juan this year. We are currently working with Jennifer from the State Park here and Caitlin with the city's new recreation department. And we're just hoping we'll be getting more information as we go on, and we will be posting as we get closer to the event. So, thank you.
Do you have a date for that?
We are hoping for April twentieth, but yeah, we're still, we're still kind of working it out right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Informational items and reports, treasurer's report and monthly financial statements. Michelle Sebastian?
Hi, how's it going? Good evening.
Hi, welcome. How are you?
Doing good. A little tired, but we are powering through.
There you go.
So I'll go ahead and get started. We're midway through the year, so that's a good thing. I see that we're going to have a mid-year review on the budget, so that'll be great. So I'll start off with the general fund. Year-to-date, our net effect is currently a positive balance of a hundred and ten K. The month-over-month change there was an increase of sixteen K. Revenues are in line with expectation and continue to slightly exceed expenditures. Some of the vendors that stood out in December were specialty construction, which is the forced main to Hollister construction project under CIP twenty-three oh two. And then MNS engineers, which you guys are pretty familiar with. We see this recurring, right? City engineer fees based on consumption, so nothing out of the ordinary there. Sandgate Consulting Services, which is our wastewater master plan, is based on consumption as well. Do make note that in December, we had some backdated billing, so that's why you're seeing two payments go out there. And then another one that stood out is Cypress Water Services, which is just our monthly sewer operation expenses there. For the Water Enterprise Fund, year-to-date, net effect is currently a positive balance of four hundred and sixty-two K. The month-over-month change there was an increase of fifty-seven K. Revenues continue to run higher than budgeted at sixty percent year-to-date. We're seeing a trend here right now, so that's actually pretty positive. And then as for the expenditures, they're in line with expectation with our recurring vendor, with our recurring expenses. And then nothing out of the ordinary popping out right now. And then for Sewer Enterprise Fund, year-to-date, net effect is currently a positive balance of four hundred and ninety-seven K. The month-over-month change there was an increase of seventy-eight K. Revenues continue to run higher than budgeted as well. We're noticing sewer, the sewer revenue, along with the commercial account popping a little bit. And then on the expenditure side, expenses are slightly running lower than expected. So that's all I have for now, unless there's questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council? Council member Freeman?
No question. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Morris Lopez.
Thanks, Michelle. No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member Sebastian?
No questions.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Oh, public comment or?
Oh, thank you. Do we have any public comment? No speaker cards received. Didn't see no hands raised, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Have a great night. Reports from city council representatives to regional organizations and committees. Council member Freeman?
Thank you. Ambag met last Wednesday night, and we discussed two main issues. Where we had the first reading or first chat about our upcoming complete streets policy, and what that basically means is Ambag is going to adopt a complete streets policy, which means that jurisdictions such as ours, if we apply for grants, we're going to need a, a, a complete streets policy, or the project will have to kind of be complete streets, if you know what I mean, including, that means not only catering to the cars, but catering to pedestrians, bike riders, hikers, sidewalks, ADA compliant cutouts and all that good stuff is basically a definition of complete streets. And so to receive grant money, we will have to have a policy or or do those items to to be eligible for a lot of grant money. The second item is, we voted on and adopted the carbon reduction program, which is a planning grant funding mechanism. It comes from the federal government, the IRA, which stands for Inflation Reduction Act. And since it's from the federal government, it's not going to be cut. It's not, it's not from the state budget. It's about two and a half million dollars to be spread out among the three counties. And it will include grants for intermodal transportation projects, bike paths, hiking trails, public transit and EV charging infrastructure. So that's something we might be able to look into and and take advantage of. And that's, that's it. Three CE meets tomorrow, so I don't have any report on that.
Water management advisory committee?
I didn't go.
Okay, thank you. Morris, council member Morris Lopez, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So I went to the monthly intergovernmental meeting. And that is with representatives from both the cities and the board of supervisors. And the main topic was follow-up on the no left turn lane from San Juan Valley roads onto Highway one fifty-six during the construction phase. As we had been talking about it for probably three previous meetings, the danger that it poses for the automobiles to cut in on that long traffic line of commuters every day after three. So the signs are up. There was a public announcements. It was on the internet. The needle link, whatnot. And I did go and check it out, and the signs are posted on Bixby where it meets one fifty-six, also at Flint Road and at Lucy Brown Road. And unfortunately, there is not. The problem is, we need enforcement, and we did talk about that on my way to the meeting that day. Meeting starts at four, and I was leaving at three thirty. And I saw large truck trailers turning left and other vehicles. So even though the signs are posted and it says no left-hand turns Monday through Friday, three to seven PM, there's still people doing that. And one of the ladies that was there from county staff was gonna, her task was to get ahold of Google because it could be that sometimes Google Maps is pointing people on those routes to turn left on the highway. So her, she was tasked with that. And then also is to reach out to Caltrans, and then also, I think, Highway Patrol, California Highway Patrol as well. But, you know, we're having a shortage of manpower with our local, you know, entities like California Highway Patrol, the sheriffs, and of course, that is county, so would not involve any of our security services. The other thing that I went to was last week, and I saw council member Freeman there, it was a leadership meeting in Hollister. I don't know the official title, but it was having to do with the county, the county's economic development program. And they had a speaker there, and essentially what the issue? And essentially what the issues are is that if we want businesses to come to our county, because we've already decided that. May, we may or may not at this point without the. Already pre-approved housing development projects that are already in the works, that we want to move to more um business development. And in order to have that attraction for businesses to come to our county or cities. We have to deal with three main things, and that was the infrastructure of roads, 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 roads. And also broadband, and also the fact that we need more electricity, more power here from PG&E. So those were, and there was a motivational speaker there that was hired. And he said basically, you know, you need to move on this and it's urgent, it's not something that we can keep. Rehashing at these meetings over and over, we need to really find a way to enact this and make it an act, make it actionable. And um if we don't, then you know, um, we won't have some of these businesses, one of the things that. I was concerned about was the speaker kept talking about technology and we know that we're a bedroom community. But if anyone read the front page of the Mercury this weekend on Sunday. There is now bottom, bottoming out of dot com already and also. Tech industry and some of it, we talked about the fact that our county is now a bedroom community. And so I said, you know, you're talking about tech, 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 what about, and there was a gentleman there that was representing, um. You know, marginalized people, you know, maybe they don't have all the higher skills or higher education or they're dealing with. Basic needs like houselessness and whatnot, and I said, what about just like making stuff like factories, you know? How can we help these people, not everybody wants a tech. Career anyway, but things are changing globally right now, locally, just up the road, it was on front page. So um he didn't really have any good answers. But I think we have to just continue to have the conversation, but also have some action plan and um to move forward. So that's what I learned, thank you.
Thank you, council member Sebastian.
Uh, I won't speak on the LAFCO meeting that I attended virtually, but. I think there's some, some items on the city manager's report with some details on that. Um, and then CMAP's meeting was just. Voting on adding people to signing checks and things like that.
Important paperwork, so.
Yep, nothing, nothing of note, um, and then with respect to public safety. Um, we only met to assist Dawn in interviewing candidates for. Um, the public safety officer. Nobody can speak to me. And I, I think that went, that went well, that was probably most of the energy spent in the, since last meeting, but. Good things afoot.
Thank you, good to hear, um, I went to the LAFCO meeting, um, elections, a lot of paperwork stuff. Um, council member Sebastian was uh voted in as our city's representative, our city's alternate. Uh, the city of Hollister and the city of San Juan Batista uh choose an alternate. Um, and I think that is going to be formalized. Um, and it will be a two-year stint, um, instead of the way it was happening. Uh, it was very confusing, uh, Elia Salinas was chosen as our public alternate. And Richard Benton Court was uh again voted in as uh our public uh at-large member. Uh. There are going to be updates to the LAFCO website, which will include um a fillable uh application. Uh, for whatever purpose, um, it's not gonna be just a general one-size-fits-all. Um. And there was a. Uh, Fire District meeting uh this past Monday, which uh went about a half an hour. And the city of Hollister was absent during it, so nothing was accomplished. Uh, we're rescheduling a meeting for either the end of the week or next week. Um, and we'll have more updates then, uh, Mayor Freeman, Mayor, Mayor Frails and I were. Uh, in attendance on that and so is our city manager. Uh, that's all I have. Um. City council and staff announcements. Council member Freeman?
Thank you. Um, I, I'd just like to say I'm really pleased to see the activity around um. City Hall and around the plaza with the film crew, it's really great to see the town buzzing. With activity and business and uh, it's a really good thing and we need more of it, thank you.
Thank you, council member Morse Lopez. Thank you, council member Sebastian.
Uh, yes, let me, switching tabs is hard. We're moving to that second part, right? The announcements?
Yes.
All right, this gives me great pleasure to announce because. It should be way warmer in July and, and happy thoughts. Um, but there is planned to be an artisans and wine showcase, um, put on July twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. Um, and October, back into the cold months, October fifth and sixth. Um, planning has already started for the second annual um Harvest Festival in town. Um, those are the only two events I have to announce, hopefully we'll get some more details on each of those in the coming months.
Uh, July twenty-eighth and.
Twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth artisans and winery showcase, and then the second annual Harvest Festival, October fifth and sixth.
Thank you very much, uh, is there a location for that artisan wine?
Uh, no location yet, I think details will be forthcoming, um, as. I think there's some, it was mentioned earlier, there's some planning going on back and forth with the, with the city, but if we can get that ironed out, I'm sure we'll get more details.
Super cool, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a street closure that'll be here, um.
Coming to us, appearing before us.
In March, yeah.
At meetings soon, thank you. Yep, not a problem, uh, we have time. Um, I just wanna thank everybody for uh attending the event. At the Hacienda this past weekend, it was a fundraiser for. Uh, the two girls that were uh that we lost tragically in a car accident in January. Um, it was put on by the V-Dub affair that we had in town in July. And those two, sorry, the two girls were actually featured in a magazine, um, and unfortunately. Uh. Unfortunate circumstances, um, but thank you all who attended the fundraiser. Um, and it is nice to see our city a bustle, uh, hopefully our, our merchants in downtown are, are feeling some of that. Uh, city manager's report.
Well, I've embedded my announcements in my slides. It shouldn't take too long, as, as council member Sebastian mentioned, uh, the public safety officer candidate, the top candidate for the job. Accepted our offer uh in writing on Friday, so we're hoping for a start date by March eleventh. Um, and that's really uh good news. Um, we have about ten candidates for the public safety officer position who will work for the public safety. Coordinator, that's a typo in my slide, the top one should be coordinator, and the second one is officer. And the coordinator then is gonna help us uh select the, the public safety officer, because they'll be working together. Um, two really, uh, some good candidates for both. Our admin assistant, part-time, uh, we've been unable to interview candidates. But that's a position that'll allow us to keep our city hall open till five, so we hope to move on that as, as possible. And at the same time, pardon me. Uh, we'll be looking for a, a part-time library tech, we're working right now with only two. And that's not sustainable, having only two part-time folks train in our library. Um, and that's also in my, my budget request. Um, we are recruiting for maintenance worker two, we started that uh last week. Um, so look for a flyer out if you know skilled maintenance workers, we lost a really great one in Brian Horner, I believe his last day is today. Was it twentieth? Yeah, last Friday, yeah, so we're gonna miss Brian a lot. And of course, I told him if, if it doesn't work out, you can come back. It's the most efficient way we could.
Absolutely.
Also, uh, I'm, 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 I'm promoting uh Liz Elizabeth Soto to acting city clerk. Um, she's now the uh deputy city clerk, but she's doing the duties of the full city clerk, so I wanna appoint her to that. And then committed to bringing the job description for the city clerk position to the council for approval in March. So those are two commitments for my agenda in March, we both. Um. Pardon me. Does your mouse work, Liz? There you go. Um, community development, uh, department status update, uh, we're retooling our community development department. We have contract staff from Four Lees handling some of our bigger projects. Uh, Adriana Ortiz and Magda Gonzalez, you saw some information from them in our consent agenda. Uh, tonight, um, they're also working with a gas station and we're making great progress on that project. And they're also helping us with some ADUs and then some other uh smaller projects. And Mr. Ortiz has served as the city of Hollister and Santa Barbara's interim community development director, so we'll be well-served by them. Um, the focus is on current planning and ordinance revisions, uh, the planning commission. Uh, looked at the uh, the temporary use of land provisions and the zoning code relative to food trucks and. And having other temporary uses on properties otherwise owned for different uses. And then uh the HRV picked up the historic preservation ordinance with Med Clovis and talked about a context. Uh, a context statement for our historic preservation ordinance to be updated and updated. So those are, those are, oh, and also our, our certified local government applications. To keep those current so that we're uh able to obtain historic preservation grant funding from the state. Um, the economic developments are being reconsidered and we'll talk about that when we look at our budget. And uh, app, especially when applications are now being filed with myself. Um, so I'm sorry if there are problems with that, and I'm also working with Adriana and, and, and Magda on those. Um, we have comments back uh from our consultant on the draft housing element, they're due at the end of March. Um. A hundred and twenty days after the deadline, so April thirteenth, I'm sorry. Uh, H, HCD can, can limit city access to state grant funding if we don't get our housing element done, so. That is a top priority and is moving forward, I was able to spend a couple hours on that today. Uh, the Caltrans sustainability grant application was resubmitted for the multimodal transportation center. As part of a, our Third Street Master Plan Project, that's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that we've resubmitted. We've updated after being debriefed by Caltrans, so we hope this one is a lot more competitive. Again, this is uh to help plan for the multimodal transportation hub at the Alameda between Highway one fifty-six and Franklin. Um, and so that, that project is up and, and, and continues to, to run. The deadline for that was uh December thirty-first, so that's been in for a while, hopefully hear from that soon. Uh, project status includes uh the gas station, I've already referenced, is on track again. Um, if we can get the major milestones completed, uh, then the, then the rest of the project will be more simple to process. So I saw a letter of incompleteness go to the developer last week from Adriana Ortiz. Um, and we've already uh consulted with our city engineer regarding potential for flooding and mitigating flooding impacts. Um, Casa Rosa, uh, we extended their building permit to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, while they uh work with a new owner on, on the uh, on the project. And I understand that they've recently retained a local contractor to complete the infrastructure, their sewer line and, and their driveway and so forth. So that's really good to hear that hopefully Casa Rosa will be moving forward again. Um, the market on Mokalemi uh is working, is moving forward very slowly, but it is moving forward. Uh, last week was the first time we'd heard from the owner in, in two months. And the owner's daughter was in touch with us regarding their tenant improvements. We're also trying to make sure that we have the parking straight and the city's right-of-way is protected on that corner, so. That's, that's one thing that, that's curious about that project. Um, so the HRV meeting, um, okay, I've already referenced the CLG reports. And uh, and the state's historic preservation ordinance, the city's preservation ordinance. Um, we have uh new grants that, that uh will update the balance. Uh, for these projects and, and, and pay for those upgrades, so. Uh, we do have money set aside for Med Clovis's services, but soon we'll be eligible for grants to help pay for them as well. Um, we have uh the new city contract staff that we've already talked about and the zoning code changes that we've talked about. Um, at the last planning commission, the hillside development on Third Street was reintroduced. Um, and they have an approved map for the eight lots lining Third Street. But the street that goes back towards the hillside has not been approved yet, so uh we're working with them on, on that subdivision. And now, uh, now this has been reintroduced and moving forward with an application. So uh, again, that's uh our new planning staff is helping with that project as well. Uh, other enforcement updates, uh, reorganizing our public safety, uh, we've already referenced, the security cameras are being installed now. Uh, we will have one here on top of this little, and this little tower behind us on the fire station, uh, we just need to finish the wiring. Um, and uh, we have uh informal discussions on the fire contract with the city manager and. And the meeting last Friday was a bit disappointing, we didn't get anything accomplished further on the, on the Fire District feasibility study. Um, city manager will be part of the new fire chief selection next week, uh, first week in March. I agree to help them with that, um, we have an ADU improvement program, it's a grant program and I hope more people will take, take us up on this offer. Uh, we visited a home uh with an ADU on it on Third Street, um, and it's a great candidate uh for this pro- program. And uh, that'll be our first recipient of the grant money. Uh, we have seventy-five thousand of grant money set aside by that, that we have to use by the end of March. So I'm working with the state HCD to see if I can get an extension on that, because it's moving a little slower than we anticipated. So, um.
May I ask a quick question?
Sure, sure.
Uh, could that apply to ADUs already in process, or does it have to be one that's? You know, where they're giving you an application to start it?
Um, the, the intent was um. To assist uh people who already own ADUs, upgrade them and get them up to code.
Okay, okay, so.
Yeah, so, and that's, that's the case here, we, we, we toured a, an old ADU. That needed some health and safety upgrades and some other things.
Can we back up for a second?
Sure.
You mentioned contract negotiations with, with, for fire, the fire contract. Do you intend to have the new PSO be involved in those contract talks?
Oh, absolutely, that was the goal. Um, the city manager of Hollister had brought to my attention a month ago that the council was questioning our contract with Hollister. So, yeah, it doesn't expire for a year, so I'm not questioning it. Um, but, but they are, so, so he thought that might come up as part of their budget, so he wants me to be aware. Budgets are on the corner, yeah. Okay. All right, uh, just a few more slides, um, the uh urban growth boundary, sphere of influence committee met uh in, in January. And it meets again this Tuesday, we are accompanied by a county resource management agency in LAFCO. And LAFCO is publishing a draft uh municipal services report on wastewater soon. And San Juan Batista provided a lot of data for that uh report that they're publishing. And it can be used for the city's MSR as required for our uh sphere of influence application, so that's an efficiency that we've already accomplished. And LAFCO confirmed that, it's substantially easier to complete the MSR this way. Um. Not, but, but we did learn some, something new that LAFCO had not budgeted for that MSR to be. Again, until July first, uh, twenty twenty-four, so, um. But one good point was made because of the desire to have the sphere of influence the same as the political boundaries I have been read on this slide. Uh, that before LAFCO considers changing the sphere of influence, so we get a good agreement with the county. So, um, to that end, the county was there to respond to that, they are already working on a grant, a five hundred thousand dollar grant. To complete an ag preservation plan, which we've worked really well around our, uh, around our city. Uh, because the desire is to preserve the, the ag uh around our city. And, and it's obvious that uh Abraham Prado and his team are, are more than happy to work with San Juan Batista on that. Um, and they actually, following the planning commission meeting, they alerted all of their staff by email and copied us. That hey, if, if, if anything is, is uh being proposed near San Juan Batista to let us know. So the communication is already improving as a result of our, uh, as a result of them learning of our intentions. So I need to bring forward some sample agreements, I think it will be in the form of an ordinance rather than an MOU. Uh, council, uh, council member Lopez, because the ordinance is, is harder, harder, harder than, harder to change. So, but we're working towards bringing that, toward, back to the, the committee on Tuesday. Um, oops, and this is the, uh, we talked about different tiers, this is the artwork of one of our, one of our committee members. Um, being that the yellow, closest to the city's boundaries would have the most intense uh concerns from the city. And then the orange is a little uh less, uh, less intense to the city and the, and the blue is something that we wanna be aware of. The map that is the committee agreed to and, and we discussed what the details of each of these different zones would be. That was took up a major part of our uh, uh, planning commission meeting, looking at, uh, committee meeting, looking at this planning area. Cog Highway twenty five, we had a half day discussion with Caltrans. And and what we learned is is that Caltrans doesn't really favor widening highways anymore. It's not reducing their vehicle miles travel. And so that's how Measure G was sold to our public, that we're going to widen the capacity and widen Highway twenty five and increase its capacity. And they have now this, the abbreviation is cap tie requirement, which is, which has come after the Measure G voting took place. So what we need to do is reduce vehicle miles traveled to get the funding for this project. Measure G was able to provide as much as a hundred and forty nine million, I think it is. And the project cost was estimated between six hundred and eight hundred million. We looked at Santa Barbara as an example of how we're going to have to re-scope the Highway twenty five project. And make it into smaller phases and have a sophisticated public campaign to promote it. Because there's a lot of money to raise for the Highway twenty five project. So we invited COG to be at this meeting, but they're unable, so we'll get a presentation from them at the March meeting. Recreation, our first event was was our Speed Dating Event on February third. And we had over thirty, we had thirty five people in attendance. It was really successful, so I was really happy for Caitlin in her first, first try out of the box. She's also helping the Fire Department plan an open house in March. And then we heard about the Earth Day event, it's going to happen at the Plaza in April. She's also looking into movie nights at Rudy Park and calculating how much popcorn she needs to buy. And sell to break even. So I'm really, really happy with her enthusiasm and her progress and she's just ramping up. Rojas Communication Group is a new lobbying group that the council approved last month. We discussed funding for the water project and with with the federal representatives. Chad from Lospin's office in Washington DC has already got a project identified for us to consider, so that's really exciting. State applications are due March first, so I've got a lot of work to do in the next week or so to get an earmark into Senator Caballero's office. And she's already sent us an outline of what those requirements would look like. That's how we funded our sewer project, we we got the information on time and in great detail. To to Senator Caballero as well as Assemblymember Rivas. And and the the planning, planning a day in Sacramento, the council's invited. The Rojas Group would like to meet us at eight or nine in the morning on March twenty first. And get into as many elected officials' offices as we can without priorities. So mark that on your calendar and we'll, and Liz and I will formalize that for anyone who wants to attend. Probably go up on the twentieth, so we can wake up early and hit the ground running. We, they have also provided us help with our FEMA applications, and that's really important, because we were struggling with that. We weren't, we were able to get them submitted and approved, but we weren't able to draw the money down. And that's often the case with these big FEMA applications, we've had a lot of turnover and our representation there. And then they talked about, they're really excited about finding funding for our Luckport Master Plan. And sorry about that title.
Have a question about the FEMA applications.
Sure.
So there are a lot of pending now, a year old storm damage from from.
Yes.
Are we waiting for FEMA money to to fix those?
No, the problem was the way we didn't select Granite Rock the way we should have, according to these consultants. And so we've got ahead now, we've got bids coming in from Chatham and from our local contractors, so that we have three competitive bids. We can show FEMA that we bid it.
Okay.
And in the height of emergency, you can just go fix things. And that's when we first approached Granite, because we were fixing things in in Rancho Vista and and on the one fifty six. But in a review with the with the consultant, I said, this isn't enough, this isn't a fly. You're gonna need at least two more bids.
Okay.
We got those bids, we're just waiting for them to come in.
Okay.
Okay, yes, let me down, thanks. All right. Moving to the next side, almost. Water, always have a water and wastewater side field. So analyzing the water qualities and quantities right now with our engineering staff. And Tonya Cal, who wrote our master plans, there's some question. And what we're learning is that the amount of water that we blend with our well water will fluctuate over time. So it may be sixty, forty, it may be eighty, twenty. There are times when the water could be hard enough that it would require no blending and just a hundred percent water. And so I did meet with Michael Ponce and others to describe how we have this model set up now. So we can vary the the amounts and then see what it does to our chemical output. To make sure that we're not causing a risk to Hollister, when they receive our water, that it'll be over their limits. So it's a pretty interesting formula, if anyone wants to walk through it with me, I'll do my best. Yeah, happy to set up a meeting for that. We have the microbe install as ninety percent plans and it should be out soon to bid. And that's going to be a pretty hefty list, it's going to be like a two hundred thousand dollar list to install the microbe system. Before, it was, it was providing clean water without nitrates, but going straight into the wastewater stream. So now it has to be plumbed into our, into our drinking water stream, to get a little bit out of well six and get it back online. We have thirty percent drawings for the the import of water from the water district. And it's been reviewed by the city engineer in return, so we hope that they're moving forward with the design of the the project to send water to our well six. And we're meeting with Caltrans and RGS to use for the use of Highway one fifty six. Caltrans approached us in the Highway twenty five meeting and insisted that we meet about their their relinquishment of Highway one fifty six. And the relationship of the pipeline that the district wants to put in into the into the highway. So that's good news, that those connections are being made. The wastewater force main is moving forward after eight change orders. We have some subgrade variations that are extreme, ten foot thick concrete underneath the asphalt in some places. And other places just really thin, like an orange peel. So we're having to deal with those variations, but we're so far still on time and under budget with our wastewater project, so that's, that's good to know. And the electronic equipment has been ordered, so we started that clock ticking as well. Attended the city manager conference. And there's something, the acronym is CRBT ballot measure, that the league has got the red alert out about. And it's a, it's a private corporations proposing a ballot measure this year that would limit local government's ability to raise funds locally. And would even clawback funds that were raised locally, say you had a sales tax measure approved in January twenty twenty two. You'd have to go back and 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 this would force local government to give that money back or at least take it back to the ballot. And put it all in question. So the league is really concerned that this matter will go forward, the governor has challenged it and it's in the Supreme Court right now. He's, they, they're arguing that it requires a constitutional amendment, not just a ballot measure. So that's something I can provide more information on, I have an article from the LA Times I can share with you on this local tax measure. And what it could do to the city. We don't have a lot of of these tax measures and things in place that this would affect. But it would will affect all the cities in a bad way. And we learned about artificial intelligence at City Hall, the need for use policy. It's interesting that that you could, for example, use artificial intelligence. And you could type in a property address or APN and it would search your website for design standards and setbacks. It'd just give you everything you need to know, like a three-page document, just helping you design your project and get all the data you need. And that's probably a lot more efficient than getting it from humans who interpret things differently. So so I'm excited to learn more about the use of artificial intelligence in City Hall, it sounds like it has some really great customer service benefits. And then the Warner Brothers film update is just on here as a placeholder, they've been a really great organization to work with. We've assigned that to Jerry Sangodetti from MNS and they're keeping it pretty busy. They will start filming this Sunday afternoon through Wednesday night. They'll be filming just at nights from from six to six PM to six AM. So the roads will be closed significantly, Second Street will be closed all the way to Mokalemi. And because they're actually making a set out of the plaza, and so they need to control noise and lights and the things. So if you go back in there, we were walking, John and I had lunch today and we walked by the the old, old Portola Hotel with the bar in the downstairs. And you can see how they've removed all of the antiques and they put in new things, so the neon lights are selling new beer, they're not selling old types of beer anymore.
There's actual beer in there as well.
Yeah, we didn't go that far. It was a working life.
You mentioned that they're keeping Jerry pretty busy, is that all on our dime?
No, that's the good news, he's available and we set up an account so he could track it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the good news.
Along those lines, if I may. Because this is in the public, it's in newspapers, it's been on television. I know. And take off, oh, good to know, I don't have that account. I know Warner Brothers has their own security, are we upping our sheriffs? To circulate with the potential of a lot of people driving through town at those hours?
Last week, we got a schedule from the Sheriff's Department per Warner Brothers' request, so that they have the support that you're talking about.
Thank you.
And that's, that's a critical component. We asked them, and they had their own contract, so we couldn't affect that. So yes, the sheriff is alerted and has already assigned staff.
Thank you very much for that.
Including our our local deputy.
Nice, thank you, I appreciate that.
And we have been referring interested parties directly to them. Hoppa Brothers, for example, wanted to cater for them, and there's some opportunity for that, so we just pass it on, so.
Nice, awesome. By local. Thank you, questions, comments, concerns on the whole entire presentation or any part there of Councilmember Freeman?
No, thank you, it was very, very complete, and like I said, I'm glad to see the Warner Brothers is working out well for the city. And AI, I. That's above my pay grade, I'm I'm gonna pass on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez. Where do I begin?
I took lots of notes before I came, sorry, I had planned to meet with you beforehand, but just sorry.
Sorry, during the short week, was it holiday?
Yeah, short week and all that kind of stuff, so sorry to burden you with some questions. But overall, the report's very comprehensive. Let's see. So you said about, just briefly for the public and for me, the Mark, the Casa Rosa, you renewed their permit to June thirtieth. Did they have any reason for why it's been stalled?
Personal issues with their contractor, health issues and other things. So that's why I was happy to hear that they had hired a new contractor.
So that's the actual person that's going to go in and build?
Yeah.
Okay. And no major changes in what the original plans were that were submitted?
None.
None, okay, great. And then is the other project with Neil's, former Neil's Market? They kind of fell off and then for the public as well, I mean, city's right of way and parking, because I grew up in this town. So there was never an issue before, with the way the cars used to park there, so what is the situation now?
They're gonna repave that and restripe it, and they were unaware that the city's right of way came so close to their building. So they wanted twenty parking slots and maybe there's room for ten. And so we're in this mode of, we could put these many on the street next to a curb, you know, trying to figure out the best. And then around the corner in San Antonio, how many could fit on that side? So the city engineers provided them with three or four different scenarios that would protect our right of ways, as well as give them as much parking as possible.
So you're talking about the actual diagonal parking that I recall that was right next, that was on the property. And then there was that curb or that embankment that was on the city road, that's where we have private, I mean, public right of way.
Right away, right.
So usually was not the diagonal parking around the building?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, and then. I didn't understand what, when you talked about community development department status. Include HRV membership review?
A member of the HRB began going through every paragraph in the HR, Historic Preservation Code. And there's really specific requirements in there of of the skill set for HRB members. Having experience and background in training in historic preservation or architecture or similar appropriate skills. And then, and then he pulled the whole HRB and no one had any of those skill sets. And so, point well taken, and so if we're, if we're not able to follow the code, then we should amend it. And so that's part of the review of the historic preservation.
So that may have to come back to city councils then?
Right, I don't know if you would call Councilmember, because you weren't on the council, but David Maderos did an extensive study with Shirley Sweeney. About whether or not the HRV and and planning commission should be separate bodies. And what I sense from the HRV and planning commission right now is that they should be separate bodies. So that I think they're gonna come back to the council with a recommendation of that nature.
Okay, all right. And then you talked a little bit about the Ambrosia Project, the Hillside Project. So their permit is good, hasn't expired?
The the one map for the eight homes along Third Street was recorded and approved. But there's a second map behind those homes with a cul-de-sac originally proposed for it that has not been approved. So.
Since we're talking about projects that have permitted, I know this hasn't been permitted yet, but there's been a lot of talk, a lot of reaching out by the developer. What do you know about the proposal or the plan over on Rancho Vista for wine tasting and more homes and whatnot? Anything else with that?
Not since Bob Fulton presented to the city council. I haven't seen anything new or different than that.
Yeah, I think he's presented to planning commission as well.
Right.
And also to the the committee with the SOI and whatnot.
That's your influence, yeah, last fall.
So nothing else, nothing formal?
Nothing formal.
Okay, so public knows about that, we know about that, okay, great. And then, let's see, what else? I told you I have a lot of questions. So it sounds like cog just flipped on us with this Measure G. They pulled the rug out from underneath us.
We're at a point where the balance is supposed to be used for Highway twenty five, so the focus is on Highway twenty five.
Yeah, but the fact that we voted as the citizens, that we wanted to widen the lanes and expand the lanes, and now they're saying that's not gonna work anymore?
They're saying that Caltrans has changed its review criteria. And that the focus is on not increasing vehicle miles traveled but decreasing it.
Well, that's impossible, we have a veteran community over in Hollister that commutes north every day.
Right, so it's, we're not a happy meeting, yeah, I mean, they spent a full day on it and there were three Caltrans representatives. If you have a chance to see the meeting, I would probably be the best one.
Okay, that's sad. Sorry, Speed Dating, I heard about that, I heard it was a lot of fun, but there is a lot more women in town than men.
I just heard from the men.
Did you? Yeah, they were out, they had, they had the choices, that was outnumbered. And so I'm glad that Caitlin's very enthusiastic, but one of the things I remember hiring the physician was that she would work with specific groups. And I don't see seniors in here, is there plans for senior involvement?
Well, interestingly enough, she started out to do a Valentine's Day dance. And she found out that the new five oh one C three for seniors had been created through Mary Edge's efforts. And so she backed off because she didn't want to step on any toes. But she does talk with Mary on a, on a weekly basis and they are, they are, they are sharing.
Maybe they need a slower kind of dating environment.
And also the library does some senior work, especially with technology.
Yeah, okay, cool. So, oh, AI. I'm looking to council member.
I'm gonna show Dawn how to use ChatGPT to create his his monthly report.
To say is caution, caution, because I guess they're, like, right now, what I heard is that. You know, like, one of the things about our town that people love about it is that we're so personal. And I would hate to see that that interpersonal, you know, interaction taken away if we're gonna be using this. I can understand where you hit a button and it goes and analyzes data to get you all the information you need for development and projects. But not like the full-blown AI where you don't have that interpersonal exchange that I have concerns about. That's it, kind of, nothing else.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, that's my respect, yeah.
I loud and clear hear what Councilwoman Mars Lopez is saying about losing the the personal touch. I think it could be extremely helpful, especially when people are just looking for information. Like, I now have the information, I can go formalize my questions and then at that next touch point, you get that. Personal, but for expediency of getting information, like, it could be great, but it's all in how you, like you said, how you implement it.
Thank you, yeah, I I think that personal touch needs a little, a little work. Before we even get to AI. Hey, hang on a second, I'll get back to you, or. Something like that, instead of blurting out an answer, yeah. Um, so, uh, my apologies to lots of questions, um. Public Safety Officer, i- is that a reduction, or, um, from the same group, or was it a whole nother application?
It was a whole nother application, although, uh, some from the first round were referred to the second.
Oh, good.
Are still interested to be the officer.
Nice.
Oh, sorry. To clarify, I noticed this on there, so the public safety one?
Uh-huh.
That was like the managerial role that was accepted?
Right.
This should be, uh, yeah.
Oh, Coordinator is number two.
Yeah.
Uh, my bad, I wrote it down incorrectly.
I just wanna make sure that we didn't later go back and misunderstand.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, Maintenance Worker Two, um. There is a component of water and wastewater in that, um, have you considered going to GAV for advertising?
No, that's a great suggestion.
Thank you. Um. Uh, well done on the appointment of our, uh, Deputy City Clerk to, uh. Acting City Clerk to hopefully, uh, City Clerk. Um. Long time coming, we should, probably should have looked at that, six months instead of a year, congratulations, and thank you very much for all you do. I appreciate you. Uh, as I'm sure so does the rest of the council, sorry, I didn't mean it to say just I do, mean it to sound like that. Um. Special events are now being filed with you, is that going to be a component of the new software that it has been, um. Uh, proposed and approved by the council for parts and rack?
Um, that software's excellent for that kind of thing.
Perfect.
Um, it, it's not the first priority, because we have people like, we have cook-offs, they come to us with a full package, so. They already have determined who their vendors are and where they're gonna be, but we can actually use that software to sell vending spaces like you would in a campground.
Oh, interesting, very cool, um, my biggest concern was that, um. When an application comes in, that it automatically be put, or immediately be put on a calendar. So that spot is reserved, um, as opposed to, um. Uh. However it works now, um, just to make sure that there is a response, that, that. Application comes in, it gets stamped as soon as it's received by, um, the front office. And then, uh, a letter going out saying, hey, thank you, we received it, your date is such and such. Um. And we'll get in touch with you as, as it gets near and, and, uh. Uh, make sure everybody is coordinating with everybody else. What? You wanna ask that question?
No, just a note for me, please.
Got it, okay, I thought it was a note for me, sorry, my bad.
Sorry.
Uh, yeah, I know. Um. Um, the HRB membership review, thanks for bringing this up, Jackie, um. This has been discussed, it was discussed when this first came up, uh, when Dave and Shirley brought it up. Um, about separating HRB and, and PC. Um, it's, it says it everywhere in the documentation that, um, there should be training and that HRB does need skill set. Um, so we as the city need to make sure that those folks are trained. Um, especially the new ones as they come on who, um, might or might not be aware of what they actually signed up for. Um. Uh, the meeting where, uh. The Board of Supervisors planners came in, um. The county planning came in, and the very next day got that letter of support for the sphere of influence. Um, that was amazing and hugely appreciated. Um, I was actually kind of surprised and thrilled at the same time by their, um, response, that was really, really nice to see. Um, I kind of like that it's going to an ordinance versus a memorandum of agreement. Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that's really cool. Um. Uh, just a, a note, um, with Caltrans, uh, Bob Tiffany was appointed by, uh, Mr. Speaker to. Um, be on the, um, uh, serving our district area, and it was really nice to see somebody from San Bernardino County. Excuse me, um, I'm not sure what those seats have been filled by anybody from San Bernardino County for a very long time. So that was super nice to, to see that happen, so congratulations to Bob Tiffany, who is a, uh, former Board of Supervisor. Uh, let's see, what else? Uh, the CRBT ballot measure, that was also discussed at, uh, the New Mayors and Council Members League of Cities meeting. And, uh, it was discussed at that, uh, the dinner that evening, and wow, League of Cities couldn't even, uh, interpret it. It was kind of, uh, crazy what, what might or might not be coming, or what will be coming down. Uh, I have nothing further, thank you very much for that report. Uh, questions, comments, concerns from, uh, Chambers and Zoomland, what do we have? We have one speaker card in Chambers, Michael Ponce. Welcome, Michael. Um. Michael, can you please make sure that the green dot is lit? I don't know if it was turned off.
It is on.
Thank you very much, all yours.
Thank you, Michael Ponce, Angel Three, First Street, I just have a couple, uh, questions and comments for the record. I did meet with, uh, City Manager Don Reynolds, and he was very helpful in answering a lot of my questions, and look forward to continuing to meet with him. But I do have a question, does the public and the council have a voice in the process of the negotiation for the final water agreement? From San Diego County Water District for the West Hill Water Treatment Plant Water? And if so, who are the council members taking part? Um, second question is, or comment is, the public needs to see a copy of the CCR, the Consumer Confidence Report. On the West Hill Water Treatment Plant Water, this is the water that Samon will be buying. Um. Uh, another question, do we know how much better the final blended water will be compared to the present water? And when will we know this? Uh, the reason why I asked that question is because one of the main selling points of the water rate increase was that we were gonna get. Better softer water to eliminate the water softeners. Um. Another question, did someone get a response from Holly Kennedy? That gave the presentation on the San Bernardino Area Water Supply and Treatment Master Plan on the Chromium Six that AccuMayor Jordan asked.
Thank you very much.
Um. Quick question on the microbe system? Uh, I thought that that was a grant that was, the system was all paid for, and now. They're saying that it might cost up some, cost the city some money to hook it up. Um, and then, another question is. How much percentage of the hundred and sixty thousand gallons of daily wastewater that we s- that we are proposing to send is from industrial users? And then my final question is, on the Third Street Master Plan, where is this master plan? I've been looking for it, I can't find it anywhere. And those are all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, and that was one of the questions I wrote down, and I forgot that I just sent it to John, thank you, Michael. That I also felt like I, you know, I've been a planner, planning commissioner, and now City Councilmember. And I've yet to really see the master plan on Third Street, I've heard it used a lot, talked about. But it would be nice to have it somewhere like on our city website that the public, and more importantly, those that are sitting behind the bias really need to know what this is.
So the master plan hasn't been written yet, um, this is our second attempt to get this three hundred thousand dollar grant that first one failed. So, so we have about eighty-five thousand dollars set aside, so that's five hundred thousand dollar project.
Thank you, do we have any other public comment?
Uh, we do have one hand raised in Zoom.
Thank you.
Ms. Wong, you have three minutes?
Thank you.
Hey, Carol.
Good evening. Um, okay, um. Quickly, uh, you know, we are, well, we're putting in an application. We used to be a certified local government with the State Office of Historic Preservation, which entitles us to get grant monies. Which we have gotten in the past to do our inventory in our historic downtown. Um, there is a program being offered later this month by the California Preservation Foundation, you can zoom into it. And it's on the Secretary of Interior Historic Preservation Standards, and those should be applied to any building permit. Um, affecting a historic resource, so the HRB members should be very, uh, conversant. With the Secretary of Interior standards, so I just want to let you know there, that program is available later this month. And quickly, the other issue has to do with Neil's Market, I didn't hear anything said about their historic sign. Which I believe will be something that's gonna have to be looked at, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much. That reminded me of one other thing, um. Dawn, you were talking about, uh, an event on March twenty-first in Sacramento. Um, if you can throw me on that list, I would appreciate it. And Jackie as well. John? John as well?
I'll be on baby lunch.
Not EJ. And Sky is TBD.
Okay, thank you.
Let me go, go.
Sorry. Thank you all for your comments, apologize for that little interjection. Uh, and we'll work on answers to, we'll work on answers, thank you.
I'll, I'll dig back through some paperwork, I sat in, um, on one of the Water Resource Board meetings, and I have some of those actual numbers. The blend numbers and paperwork from them, so I'll dig, and then try to pin you.
Uh, and I, I, I think they keep changing ever so slightly, um, especially when. What committee are we on?
Water Resources or Governance?
The Governor, the, yeah, the Governance Agency.
The, the part of the problem is, is that the, the water from San Luis Reservoir is not necessarily, you can't dial it into a certain number, it, it varies. I would say within twenty percent, you know, so it's, one day it's a hundred parts per million calcium carbonate hardness, the next day it's a hundred and ten. Or not next day, but next week, next month is a hundred and ten, down to ninety, up to one twenty, it has a fluctuation, so. We're, it's never gonna be dialed into. One hundred and, and we'll mix in thirty percent, and then it'll jump up to one forty, it'll, it'll never be that precise, it's always gonna be fluctuations. Our calcium carbonate hardness in our well water fluctuates between, uh, four hundred and five hundred by itself, and that's an even. That's a twenty percent range right there, and so that's, that also vary that number tremendously, so it's, you can't be that precise.
But there, there's a target, and, yeah.
You wanna know the target?
Yeah, absolutely, and we really can't speak to it because it's not agendized, so we'll get these, um, potentially agendized and have a conversation about them, coming to a meeting near you soon. Uh, do we have an update from the Fire Department or the Sheriff Department?
No, I don't see either on the call today.
Thank you. Uh, consent agenda, uh, all matters listed under the San Juan Batista City Council. Consent agenda may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council or public requests discussion or a separate vote. Does anybody wish to, uh, pull anything from the consent agenda, Councilmember Freeman?
No.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes, if we can please pull for discussion, resolution, um, addressing the closure of streets in regards to the street, Mandela, please.
Sure. Uh, Councilmember Sabathia?
Uh, can we pull for discussion B? For the Warner Brother Project Street closures?
Absolutely, and, uh, I have a question on D and E, uh, we just received them, do we want to pull them for the next meeting?
So I, um.
Yeah, yeah, sure, okay.
Okay.
Thanks, uh, okay, can I please have, uh, a motion to approve, uh, item A?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, motion to approve consent agenda item A from Councilmember Sabathia, seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sabathia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Sabathia, approve a resolution authorizing the closure of Streets for Warner Brother Picture DC Project.
Yeah, let me scroll to that map, um. I don't have any particular objection, I just wanted to make sure we discussed that closure is pretty extensive. Did we, have we considered, or can we talk about the considerations for how that's gonna impact, um, travel through the city and all the people who live in those areas?
I'd, I'd be happy to, um, under, with the understanding that it's mostly Second Street, and then the Third Street connectors between Franklin and Muculeme. Um, and that the closures would begin at four PM in the afternoon on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Like, that'll be, you have the sheriff posted there for all the people trying to speed their commute through, that'll be really entertaining.
It'll impact Fourth Street certainly, as we've seen, when we, when we, uh, close the lane on Third Street.
Um, so with that closure, will the, I know we've talked about the, the sheriffs being around more to help Warner Brothers, do we, do we have any particular plan for? Um, you know, people looking out for pedestrians and, and, and whatnot as they're. It, it looks like there's great potential for confusion as, as people are trying to get around some of these closures.
So the most important part is, um. Is to have the block, the roads blocked, um, at the bottom, so in fact, I don't see it in this map where. Where on Franklin Street, for example, you don't want that road closure way up there on Second, you want, you want that sign down on the Alameda, so people don't make the turn up on Franklin and get stuck. So, um, so I've, I mentioned that to our traffic folks already, um, so what's important is that they have appropriate warnings heading into those.
Could we put one of those, uh. Street signs, the, the big one? Uh, the big orange one, Caltrans sign that we used for no trucks allowed?
That's, that's a good suggestion, I'll bring that up to Jerry tomorrow, uh, maybe we borrowed those from the Office of Emergency Services.
Okay.
So see if we can get them back just for the week.
Sure, thank you. Uh, anything further on that?
Uh-uh, that was my, yeah, only question.
So I have a little question on also, is it just gonna be signage, we're not gonna block the lanes?
Oh, no, there'll be people at each, there'll be people.
People, but not a, not a physical barricade.
There'll be both.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, it needs both, and it includes the sidewalks, this is an issue they had in Sacramento, they had a, a bit of a mess, because. Many people were able to get past the barricades and, and view the project, and it was troublesome.
So, uh, just for clarification, they have their, um, a large security detail of their own that's coming in to do all of this?
Yes, with the sheriff to support it.
Right, thank you, uh, okay, may I have a motion to approve, uh, consent agenda item B?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, motion made by, uh, Councilmember Sabathia, Sabat-. Thank you. Uh, motion made by uh Councilmember Sabathia, seconded by Councilmember Freeman. Uh, may I have a motion, I mean, a roll call, please?
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sabathia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, consent agenda item C, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, my, I, I'm a hundred percent backing this project. I think it's wonderful. The arts come to the community. They've done this before and they're beautiful. They have a lot of community involvement, so that is not my issue. The um, the question I have is the location of this current year's Mandela. Uh, Franklin Street between Third and Fourth is right at the entrance to our one-way um main street, Third Street. It's a very short street. It's a very narrow street. Um, so I know in the past they had the project. I believe it was on um, right in front of the Rosa's Historic um House.
Fourth Street, uh, Polk, Polk Street.
Yeah, Polk Street. And then also I thought, why not Polk Street up in front of their actual venue? The Credo Studio, um, which lends itself to a little bit wider street. And even my other choice would be because it seems like our Luck Museum ground and our library is now becoming. I think it'd be nice to have that as a gateway to city and really showcase more art. Um, community art, and that would be, you know, that street is huge and wide. So I'm just wondering if we can have a discussion about that. And I know the project director is here, Ms. Hill. Um, as to why they chose that smaller street.
Ramona, would you like to, yeah, come on up. Thank you.
Say your name for the record. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Um, Council, my name is Ramona Hill, local artist. And thank you so much, Jackie, for approving stuff for discussion. Um. Franklin, I believe that must be a typo. And I think I'm, 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 you know, my application has not actually been submitted yet, so I think there was just something missed. And you and I think exactly alike, because the location that I actually am asking for is um Polk Street between Second and Third here, in front of the studio. Um, but I also do have questions about that location. I measured out there today. I can fit about a thirty-two foot diameter there. Of course, I'm not going to be painting over any street, um, you know, directionals. So between the stop and the driveway for the Fire Department, I have space. Um, my understanding is that the uh fire engines um would be just, uh. Well, I forgot my word, but they use this uh house here, right? They're not using this street. So as far as I'm being dispatched, I would not be blocking them if I were here, right? Okay, so, um, yeah, unfortunately, the resolution has.
I just wanna say typically, um, occasionally they, well, if Second Street is closed, they may wanna use this bay instead. Because there would be no one blocking it. But that's why the paint, that's why the paint is marked that way.
Yes.
As needed, but that's their normal aggressive addresses from, from this.
Okay. So with this street closure, how would that work? I mean, they would just, they would not be using that street. I, I mean, I really wanna make sure I understand for sure how that would work.
One day for, so, yeah. Yeah.
They would just use the other space. Yeah, okay. Um. Right, and, and um, I have done one at the library before in two thousand nineteen. That's a much smaller spa- space. It was about twenty-eight feet in diameter. It's, you know, um, you know, it's a few feet, makes a little difference, but it was still actually one of the favorites over there by the library. What I like about downtown is the visibility for our visitors. Very rarely will tourists go to the library. And also the mandala is being produced to be part of the Earth Day event. So it will be, it is actually um designed to be a community resource, not just a not just a piece of art, but a meeting space. Um, I'm proposing for the Earth Day event and opening ceremony at the um mandala. I know uh River Sauvageo, my mentor in Ohio, will have dance performances done. It can, you know, there can be uses for it if the community knows about that and understands it. Um. And speaking of my application, um, it was technically due on the thirteenth of this month. I knew I was coming to this meeting. Um, what is holding up right now is that I do not yet have a nonprofit sponsor. So that affects the cost of the road closure. And I think the application cost itself, I personally cannot front those funds this year. I think my partner, uh Jennifer Colby, has said she can, but um, so it, but it's a good idea to know what those amounts will be before we start putting out money. So I'm looking for a nonprofit sponsor. I do have a corporate sponsor, so I have funding. I just don't have um, the, you know, the admin support, so looking for that. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Um, uh, motion to approve uh a resolution authorizing the street closure for the mandala. Uh, with the change of from Franklin Street between Third and Fourth to Polk between Second and Third.
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Uh. Motion made with the changes from uh the street changes um by Councilmember Sabathia. Uh, seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sabathia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, and um, the minutes for October and November. Uh, we will have them read by the March meeting. Thank you. Um, so if we can just move those to the March meeting, um, I would appreciate that. Um, may I have a motion to approve D and E movement to the March meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, motion by Councilmember Sabathia, seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez. May I have a roll call, please? Sorry.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sabathia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Uh, everybody good on the council so far? Ready to keep moving? Okay, action items. Uh. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four mid-year budget adjustment. Sorry, I didn't even ask if you gentlemen were okay to keep moving forward. Done. You got a lot of talking to do. You ready?
Oh, yeah, we'll get through this. I think I have eight slides.
Let's do this. Hi.
So as part of our budget cadence, we refer to it as, um. After we uh review the audit, then we need to go back and make sure that the budget assumptions that we made in April and May are still valid and, and make an assessment on what has changed. I have the revenues, uh, they've come in six months now fifty percent of what we projected, or are they higher or lower? Um, are the expenses that we projected uh at fifty percent, or are they higher or lower? So knowing our front balances with the audit approved in January, we're ready to look at our mid-year budget adjustments, which will lead right into uh an update of our strategic plan and then, then our budget for next fiscal year. So um. Thank you.
And subsequent. Yeah.
There you go. Um, so, you know, I, I was talking with uh another city manager two weeks ago and uh he feels that there's no need for mid-year budget amendments if you budget correctly. And so, well, in our city, that's not the case. Especially when we're counting on contractors to fill expensive positions like the second deputy, you know? Um, so um. There it goes. Uh, so the budget revenues are stable, trending slightly higher, two percent higher than projected. Um, but one exception is our interest earned. Uh, we only budgeted like six thousand, eight thousand dollars for that. And uh, we've already received more than sixty thousand dollars in interest. So that's really good news, and that gives us a hundred thousand dollars to consider um tonight and in the future for our reserves. Um, exhibit A in the resolution, I have a slide for that later, uh, um, and we'll go through that. But it lists about uh, uh, seven or eight different changes that I'm recommending at this point in our budget season. Uh, budget expenses are trending lower than projected, uh, due mostly to staff vacancies, uh, the recreation department. Uh, that wasn't filled till more than four months into the year. And the sheriff dedicated, dedicated deputy um, is another one that isn't filled. That's a hundred and fifty thousand, so that's seventy-five sa- savings right off the top. So that puts us in really good shape, uh, as far as our general fund. And it doesn't do much for our, our public safety or, or other things, but um, uh, but at least our, our budget numbers are in good shape. So um. Um, let's see. Well, if I could show this fully, I would, but. No, okay. I make that as big as I can. Um, oops, that's a different report. Um. There we go. I couldn't see it. Okay, there we go. That's a little bigger. Um. Yeah, please. Can you make it to the whole page so we can see some of the numbers? Some. There you go. Awesome. Okay, thank you, Liz. Um, so, yeah, we have the nine, these, this, this is actually a page out of our resolution that we adopted in June when we adopted our budget. And it talks about the use of a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from our general fund reserve. So up here we have the GF Reserve, and then, then we have listed some projects down the right-hand side. Most of those, most of that four hundred and twenty-five is in this three hundred thousand C I P number here. Um, but the small pieces are also just as important. Um. So um, we, I did provide detail in our budget, uh, and this is the detail from the economic development. We did a lot of training as listed here. There's the acronym CALAD. That's the same group that put on our program last week. Uh, with the county and, and city of Hollister present. Uh, we have spent most of the training money. So of the thirty-one, one sixty-five, we have about fifteen thousand left. And if the council recalls, we talked about this program called the California Main Street Program. Um, just community engagement and assessment. And so um, this was part of our Third Street transformation, and the council didn't approve the contract. So uh, one thing I hope we can talk about tonight is potential uses for that fifteen thousand dollars between now and June thirtieth. If there's more that we wanna do in economic development. Um, I think the city needs to consider, I, I wrote down in my notes from the training we had last week that if you don't have a plan, you may end up somewhere you don't wanna be. And I noticed that we have a uh, uh, twenty fifteen strategic plan that was done by some Cal Poly students that I shared with the council. And I think a strategic plan would be really the tool for us, because it, it would set the course, and if we could agree to that strategic plan, then I think we have the cart before the horse before. We didn't have that strategic plan, and we were out busy knocking things off, accomplishments, accomplishments or training and what have you, without, without a real direction. So uh, if we were gonna reuse that fifteen thousand for something else this year, I was hoping that we would think about uh having a consultant come in and do a strategic plan for us. So um, we can talk about that now or later. Um, the recreation budget, um, we added fifteen thousand four hundred to it with this resolution. So it was up to forty-five thousand dollars, and we've only spent twelve thousand. So um, I've worked with Caitlin to come up with a budget for some of her programs coming up. And, and uh, there's plenty of money already in the budget, just different line items that, that we're recommending. Um, so that's the status of the recreation budget. Um, and so we have a hundred and five thousand dollars in general fund expenses. Um, and I'm asking the council to consider increasing the rec hours from twenty hours per week to thirty hours per week, because there's no budget change needed due to the savings. So we already have that in place. It's gonna give Caitlin more time to, to get her program started. Um, we've been struggling lately because we only have two uh part-time uh library staff. And whether that's uh ten hours or thirty hours, um, I'm asking for a third position because we need the third leg to the stool. If someone is sick and someone's out of training, then we have to shut the library down. So um, and we wanna avoid that. We wanna give our, our current staff a break as well. Um, we're not getting much of a time off because we're trying to get by on two part-time staff there. Um, and then the coordinator, the coordinator's salary, the public safety coordinator's salary was budgeted between fifty and sixty-seven dollars per hour. And um, we ended up agreeing to sixty-seven dollars per hour as the uh, the, our best applicant was making more than that at their last job. So um, it just, it's obvious to me that, that that's, that, that salary wasn't competitive. And so I wanna keep the pay at sixty-seven per hour, but move the scale up. So that way our, our new coordinator has room to grow, and when we re-recruit for this position, we'll have a more competitive salary. So this adds two five percent bumps on top of the sixty-seven per hour that we've agreed to pay him so far. So that's a change because uh Wendy and I budgeted at fifty dollars per hour. So we needed to bring that to the council's attention uh at this mid-year term. Additional changes for public safety include uh five thousand dollars for uniforms, training, and general operations. We're gonna have two officers, so we're gonna need a second vehicle, and maybe that's a second vehicle that could be shared uh, so that we can take a city vehicle to the post office. We can take a city vehicle. I can take a city vehicle to Hollister instead of my own vehicle. Um, so what we call a fleet vehicle that we share, but it also serves the second uh public safety officer. Um, we have uh two hundred thousand set aside in a public safety initiative. We only used twenty-two thousand of that on cameras because that was for installation of leased cameras. We didn't buy them. We had one offer to buy cameras at a hundred and fifty thousand. We chose not to do that. So um, we left, that left us with a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar balance. So I'm recommending the seventy-eight thousand for public safety to accommodate our new staff uh be used from that two hundred, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar balance. That leaves a hundred thousand, sorry for the zero. Um, um, and that leaves a hundred thousand for additional public safety considerations as, as we go forward. Then uh shifting gears uh to general government, um, we had the request from the Leadership Academy. Um, they, they came and, and announced that they were re-initiating the Leadership Can- Academy and have submitted a, a request to the city for five thousand dollars to help them get that off the ground. Crida, this is uh, uh, the second line item is the request that I was, thought I was gonna get from Ramona for money for the, for the Mandela project. I just heard her say she didn't need it. Um, I don't know what the council wants to do with that at this point. I, I thought she needed money. Last week she said she was going to submit an application that she needed money. And um, so that's not what I'm hearing today. So I don't know if, if you wanna set something aside just in case or, or how, how we could talk about that later as well. Um, Community Development Department, as, as I noted earlier in the, in the city manager's report, we are relying on foreleaf for planning services. And those are billable, those are billable against those developments, but we still need a line item so we can charge against them. So that's, that's maybe fifty thousand. That's for the whole six months from January to June. Um, and then we have two additional C I Ps, so we have the, the vehicles recommended. Um, we have a leak in the flat roof across the parking lot from this here, the, the firehouse dorm roof is leaking. Um, and then uh earlier, last fall, I'm sorry, we replaced, we had an emergency pump replacement uh that meant it's twenty-six thousand dollars. So our, our C I P that we have money reserved in case we need to replace a pump, that money's been used, so I'm asking that, that we replenish that. So um, I summarized these things uh in this table. Um, and basically showing an annual impact versus, versus the impact this fiscal year, which is only thirty percent of the year um, and how they'll be paid for. So to recap, we have the library part-time would impact our general fund budget about seven thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. And that could be taken out of the hundred thousand dollars in the interest income that we've made. A recreation, uh, that's an additional three thousand dollar cost to that budget over the next three months, about a thousand dollars a month. That can be taken out of the savings that we've already experienced in the recreation budget. Um, public safety, uh, moving the range uh to sixty-seven. Uh, this is a forty-four thousand dollar impact to our budget annually, but it would be thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one from department savings. So that's, that's uh, because it took uh six or seven months to fill the position, we have sufficient savings to cover that thirteen thousand dollars. Um, and then the public safety uh five thousand dollars would also uh be accommodated by, by the department savings. Um, the general government items are sixty-five hundred dollars total, and that would come from the uh, the interest earnings, the increased revenue that we've received. Um, and then the fifteen thousand dollars is just, uh, do we wanna repurpose this is, is the question here? And if so, uh, be happy to consider uh those options tonight. And then the fifty thousand dollars needed for the uh, the community development would have to come from the increased funds. So at the bottom, you see this number of sixty-three nine fifty-one, and that's what uh is recommended in this table to be taken from the hundred thousand in, in the, in the interest uh income that we're earning. Uh, we have the three C I Ps listed below. Um, the, the roof has been uh quoted at thirty-six thousand dollars, and we're waiting for two more bids. Um, the vehicle we have at seventy-three thousand dollars, which is fully equipped with the lights and other public safety features. Um, and then the emergency pump replacement for thirty thousand, that comes from the, either the sewer or the water enterprise uh reserves. Um and then the emergency pump replacement for thirty thousand, that comes from the either the sewer or the water enterprise uh reserves. Depending on on which system needs needs to needs to pump. So that's um that that table summarizes um. Pretty much the uh the whole request for the budget amendments this year. Um so of a hundred thousand additional general fund revenue, this budget amendment proposes using sixty three nine fifty one. Uh for those programs, uh using thirty thousand from the uh enterprise fund reserves for the emergency pump replacement. And then uh dipping in to a little bit of the public safety set aside, uh after using seventy eight thousand on the vehicle. Uh and the other things, so that's that's it in a nutshell. Um and that's a lot of information, so I'm happy to go back over any of those issues with you guys. That's the whole point.
Thank you, uh council member Freeman.
Yes, uh um. I I I it sounds good, I I like most of it, I I wanna talk a little bit about that vehicle, but seventy three thousand dollars, um. Seventy eight, that's that's even worse, okay? That sounds like a lot of money, um.
How how much you wanna spend on a vehicle, I'll take anything.
Okay, so. You can get a Model Y for about forty four. A- and you can get five thousand bucks from three CE, that takes it down to uh thirty nine. And a a bunch of roof lights, I don't think that's gonna cost thirty thousand bucks, so it would it would be quite a bit cheaper and your. Gas prices are half because it's electricity and not gas. And uh I I think we can save uh thirty thousand right there, you know, that that's that's my opinion.
Would you like a six floor Tesla?
It's it's ma- it's made in California, um you know, it's got a lot of advantages.
I vouch for the motor gearbox design.
I I can see the headlines now, San Juan Batista moves to Tesla, that's that's good, that's good, that's a good line.
We're well behind the curve, Capitolo, Seaside have already done done that.
Well, did you wanna, did you wanna reduce that then to fifty thousand, did you wanna reduce that to uh?
Yeah, I think so.
That's fine, the list just goes in.
Because because by twenty twenty seven, we're gonna be required to have all EVs in our fleet anyway. And between you and me, that's only two and a half years away and we don't use. You can drive all day in this town, I don't like put fifty miles on my car.
A golf cart, there you go.
Okay, the Model Y will fly too, it'd go fast if you.
The speed limit in San Juan is twenty five miles an hour for everybody out there.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to say it's not a slow car.
One fifty six is under construction.
Thank, thank you, it, anything else? John, no, okay, council member Boris Lopez.
Well, I think I really agree with council number Freeman. The seventy eight thousand, first it was seventy three thousand, then the seventy eight thousand. And I was thinking maybe buy a used vehicle from another city, but he brought up a very good point. Either an EV or a hybrid. Um you know, cause we have a small jurisdiction, we don't, you know, but if we could do something to cost save, you know, by a used vehicle. Or like you said, getting the rebate for EV or hybrid would be awesome. The other comment I have about the cost savings because we haven't hired the backfill for the. Safety coordinator.
As the second deputy.
Yeah, so, yeah, you save money because we haven't hired him. But can we maintain that upper limit of hourly wage? And the other thing I think about, and this is me personally and maybe public will agree or other members here. That when you, yeah, there's a standard of an upper limit or a range according to your experience. But you also have to look at where you're gonna move to what city or what situation. The demands here are not gonna be the same as Santa Clara County or Santa Cruz County. So can the city of San Juan afford to maintain that higher limit of hourly rate or pay? We can do it now because we saved, but can we maintain it and is it realistic for what we have here is my comments on that. Um and then the increase in the thirty uh twenty hours or thirty hours for the rec tech. She did come on late, um granted, she's been working a lot of admin work, but I haven't seen a lot of of product yet. So to jump her from twenty to thirty, I really say why don't we go slow? Give the lady three eight hour shifts, which is a lot easier to maintain. If she, you know, then twenty hours is kinda weird, what is that? Twelve hours one day, eight hours the next, or thirty hours, is that three tens?
It's 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 four times five, it's twenty hours.
So that's even hard because when you're like maybe getting in the role of something and then. Four hours you're into it and then you gotta cut short, stop at hour five. You know, I it seems to me like let's kind of increase her slowly. And give her a normal eight hour shift so she can get stuff done. And then revisit that, that's my my comment on that. And then I didn't know that we had a two-legged stool at the library, I thought I always see a lot of people there. Are they volunteers that are there and then we have two paid people?
Two paid people, Australia and and Rochelle.
And then what are their total hours combined for the coverage?
Uh thirty for Rochelle and twenty for Australia.
Okay, so we got fifty hours of coverage and the library's open in six days a week, eight hours a day?
It's in the staff report, um.
We got this today, sorry. Like we got this right before the meeting, I think.
What did you get just?
Yeah, just just this part, just the slides, but there there was.
Staff report, it's not in the slides.
Hang on, I'm finding it, I'm looking for it, not finding it.
Cause I remember doing the math.
Yeah, I looked at it as well and had had a similar question and and I'm like, oh yeah, sure, that makes total sense.
The our library is operated with three employees to ensure that it can stay open six days a week. Or between six and seven hours each for a total of thirty nine hours per week.
Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Thank, thank you, council member Sabafia.
Yeah, can you go back to your first budget slides? Like I.
Taking them page by page.
Yeah. So I think this was the.
Oops, sorry. That's the original slide. That's the original slide.
Okay, um for the public safety reorganization, I see that it we're adding the full-time coordinator. We're adding the full-time.
What line are we on?
One. Coordinator, the full-time officer, um and eliminating private security. Um my first question in there was I thought that a lot of the. Um code enforcement or all of the code enforcement duties would go to the community service officer. Is that role not being eliminated as well, or we just didn't choose to speak on that?
No, we consolidated two part-time positions into one full-time community services officer.
Okay, okay.
So so that's that's how that came up, came to be. And there is such savings in eliminating private security that that at this time back in June, we were showing there would be saving money by real.
It makes sense, but so what we will go from is having private security and a. Code enforcement officer to having a full-time coordinator and a full-time community services officer.
Yes, they're being recruited now.
Okay, okay.
So we are eliminating the code enforcement officer position and the private security position and having the two new positions.
That was all done with a bunch of.
Yep, clarification only, thank you, because it can, it doesn't say, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
It doesn't say code enforcement there. My bad, my bad, I got the same thing.
Uh, okay, so that was understood.
Happy to share the job, I did, the council approved the job description for the community service officer.
Oh, yeah.
Clear on that, it did. Okay, the way this is written, it looks like we might end up with three people instead of two.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was just confirming that we weren't.
This is the slide from from June seventh, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Next one, I think. Some of these numbers start looking all the same. Oh, recovering.
Yeah, coming, there you go, thank you.
And there was one before this, I just. There's economic development. Thirty one, we have fifteen left.
Yeah, I I at least for me and I believe it's gonna be the same answer, sorry I put words that everybody else knows. Not super interested in bringing back that Main Street. Thing, but if we could come up with something compelling there in terms of. What to do with that, I'm in favor of exploring options for what we what we might spend that that surplus on, that fifteen K.
Okay, that's great, I can explore.
This one, this one. Um as far as the recreation technician, I I know she was spearheading that software, it might be a little bit out of her realm, but in terms of if we wanted to. Further justify um increase hours, I had a question.
You go.
Is it, is it possible for her to take on some of the, not the approval, but some of the administrative stuff with respect to. Um if, you know, getting permits processed and and responses out so that, you know, takes that responsibility away from you and gets a little bit delegated. If she's gonna be pushing that through that software, um that might be in my mind a a further justification. For for some hours, if you can.
Yeah.
You know, do a little bit more right, but also take a little bit of that on, um and gets gets a lot. Another thing off your plate. Uh just kind of trying to get creative there. Um something to think about.
Yeah, she's at a conference this week, so I'm really glad that she's there.
Good for her, good for us.
Yeah, that was my only comment there, I thought, I mean, if she's administering that software, it might not be a big ask to. You know, also be processing things through there, it might get.
Absolutely.
That stuff done a little quicker, um so I'm, if if that's a guess, I'm not opposed to increasing those hours. I am in favor of the. The public safety salary range adjustment, that makes sense to me, um. I think what we found in the in the candidate that accepted was an exceptional hire. And so offering that person that high end of the range makes a lot of sense and. Thinking, you know, having forethought about, you know, adjusting the range such that where they are now is in the middle makes sense. I don't have any other thoughts about.
Okay, while we're on that slide, can I ask a question on on that? Did we uh the original offer, was that for the fifty to sixty seven dollars an hour?
The the important question is, what did we advertise? And we advertised, and we advertised fifty to sixty seven. And it came to one thirty nine, three hundred. And originally he declined our offer in part because he thought he was gonna make a hundred and forty thousand a year, he's making a hundred and sixty five in his current job. So the all I had authority, uh so I offered him a position for as much authority as I had, uh the sixty seven an hour. And and so so he signed and agreed to come on board with us. Um at one thirty nine, three, but a year from now, he wouldn't, I wouldn't have a five percent step to offer him.
Right, uh a- and I understand all of that, it it this is the second position that we've done this to where we've offered a position at a certain. Range and put them at the very top, so it's like the council's hands are tied and we have no room or or um. Our hands are tied and we can't say no, um and I'm I'm sure um that it's an amazing um. Uh hire, um but I think we need to be mindful of of what our salary ranges are and. Um uh if you were expecting something else, but you applied for a fifty thousand dollar an hour job, thank you very much. And if you expect seventy dollars an hour, have a nice day. Um I mean, I feel like we're kind of bound by that, not that it's a bad thing because it sounds like it's a really good hire, I just need to. Us to be mindful of of what we finally do offer with the understanding that we do have salary ranges. Um and if people wanna apply for a fifty to sixty seven dollar app. Fifty to sixty seven dollar an hour range, that there might be good people in that as well. Um uh but.
Yeah, I think the, sorry, having been involved in the the interview process, it it. It, I think it was much more in line of like. Understanding that. There was a range and he felt he qualified for the top end of that range and then we we offered that and it was accepted. I and I think Don's just trying to future-proof.
We originally offered the middle of the range and he said no.
Right, so we could have said, thank you very much, have a nice day, we appreciate you and and.
Started to go that direction.
And definitely think you're worth that, but. We are a little city and and might not be able to afford that, um and there could have been. I didn't look at any of the the resumes or anything, there could have been somebody who was. Um as good or as qualified who could have met that range, who could have met our range. Um and I and I know council members um in the past have said, uh you get what you pay for. Um which in some respects is is a valid statement. I think we all do a pretty good job and we get paid nothing. Um so kudos to us. Um I just, I just need us to be mindful of what we're offering and and what we come back with. In the future, in the future.
For me, it was, can we maintain it? And also like where do these council members, women come from? Well, in a much bigger city, where the expectation on salary was there at all.
Santa Cruz, sure.
New York, we're a much smaller city, we're a village, I mean.
Right, but we are getting rid of two positions. Or two, one position and one contract. Yeah, so that's uh, wh- what are we paying private security now, a hundred and twenty?
Yeah, at least a hundred and twenty.
And then uh the code enforcement salary is or.
Fifty six an hour, thirty hours a week.
A year? Sorry.
I don't have the number.
Okay, so so we're changing fifty six dollars an hour to sixty seven dollars an hour and we're getting rid of a hundred and. Twenty thousand a year to whatever we're gonna be offering.
The officer is much less than the coordinator.
Right, so i- in the wash, it all evens out. Yeah, um thanks, thanks for that. Yeah, okay, thank you, um. Uh okay, sorry, go ahead, we're on you still, I'm just piggybacking. Keep going, man. We're on a roll.
Uh at at some point, we should have a a report out, either from the mayor or or Don. Myself, if we want about the the output of that interview process, I think that would be.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Uh point taken on everything that you're saying, I think hearing that output, the I think the the sentiment would probably be.
Oh, oh no, I get the whole, I I get it, yeah, I just, it's the second position that the council has been.
Understood.
This position, sorry to use that word redundantly, but yeah.
Let me get in my thoughts, I think the. The budgeting for the uniforms and all that. I'd like to see like. Part of this position, this management position of of the coordinator that we've offered, uh maybe before we start spending money, let them. Figure out what they need and what they want.
Yeah.
Um type thing, not that there shouldn't be budget for that, but like. Another thing that you just. Hopefully we can take off your plate, Don. Another one less thing that you have to do, uh start delegating a lot of that. Um that's my comment there.
Before we move on to another slide, go ahead if you're still on this slide.
Still on this slide, uh the Leadership Institute five K. Middle of the page.
Got it.
Right there. I'm trying to jog my memory, I don't. I remember I was having lots of questions about what was going on there during that presentation. So, so I don't think I'm ready to. Trigger on a check yet.
So this is the one that Omar from HDA came and presented and um.
Brenda Weatherly has been been asking the city of Hollister to contribute and the county of.
County, yeah, and I spoke to um Brenda and I think Scott spoke to her as well. And it's a a whole entire county community thing. Um where the group that is putting this on is so diverse. Um one of the members on it is the former uh dean and president of Gatlin College, Dr. Rose. Um so it's not just um. Hollister, for lack of a better group, um to choose these people. Um and I actually had a lengthy conversation with Brenda, um because one of my concerns was, are we picking and choosing? Um because one of my concerns was, are we picking and choosing who are going? Who who they want in this group?
Questions on selection criteria and.
Yeah, and if it was folks who just want to see a new government and put people in place. And um it sounds like this is such a diverse group. And Brenda actually offered to to come back and speak to the council. Um to to answer that question, but it sounds like it's. It's business, it's students, it's government, it's um nonprofits, it's everybody and anybody who can afford. To actually um go through this program and um it's to become a better. Uh supervisor in business, in management, in um education, in. Um in government. Um to me, it sounded like after asking that question and it was, uh honestly, it was a smart ass question. Um and was kind of surprised and and appreciative of the council's backing on that question. Uh the support that I got from it and um how concerned they were with me asking that. Um so it sounds like it's more than. Um it's, it sounds like it's a really good program.
Yeah, it it may be, I I think I need to see more details and more direct relevance before I.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, and I I appreciate the the backing backing on that um. Uh and and both the city and the county have um supported it in. Considerably larger. Uh grants or whatever we're gonna call it, um Don, do you know what their numbers are?
I I don't.
And I can't remember what they are.
But yeah, ours was significantly less than.
Yeah, and again, that's based on population, but um yeah, if we can have um Brenda come back to that and just put that one as a aside. Unless the ra- the rest of the council wants to. To to go along with it. Um but yeah, we can, we can ask for clarification on that.
Yeah, I think I'm done with that one, if you don't have any other.
Um so.
I have more on this slide, I'm just done with that line item.
Yeah, I I just wanna um, I don't wanna lose that light item um. But if we can. I don't know, put a asterisk around it. Pending. Uh 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 I don't know, pending uh acceptance from whatever Brenda comes to say in the March meeting, if we invite her to March's meeting. Don? I I don't know what to, how to how to hold a spot for that, just in case.
I wrote it down.
Okay.
I had a question when we were talking about Credo. And again, now the money is on this line item. I'm real confused, it sounds like she hadn't actually put in. An application, how did any of this get on agenda or or any of that?
She promised that she was gonna submit an application a week ago. And I just felt that if I didn't have it on this agenda in some form or another, that she would she would think that, so. It's easier to put it on here and not fund it or postpone funding it or or wait until March, um the she's asked for an April road closure.
Okay.
So. I I um. I felt like I needed to have something on here about the mandala.
Okay, I I guess my only comment and aside to that is. We need to find a way to put equal priority or having. First come, first served, however we wanna call it, on all applications so that they get the same and proper attention.
So can we put something in? And and I don't know how to do this, just a a suggestion or a question, if we can put something in where we look at. Uh granting uh twice a year uh. And whatever those months are uh fiscal or or calendar. Um January and July or however we wanna do it, and if you want funding for something. Bring it to the council. In the beginning of the year or the second half of the year.
It it should be done in time for the budget, so it should be requests in April or May um. And then when we approve our budget effective July one.
For the for the year. Okay.
But but this event comes to our attention, not a year in advance.
Yeah, and I don't know how to. Hi, thank you very much, but your request was due. April of last year for.
Yeah, I think if we're if we're very clear. The ambiguity is the hard part, right, if we're very clear about the ask date and the the. Line on the sand is here, then we can stand behind, hey, yeah, we're not entertaining mid-year requests because we have this touch point to do that.
Right, so when we talk about the next budget. Um can we? Can we talk about that having specific dates to have? Those in there.
So I've done that before, I've done that before, um we modeled a United Way application process.
Okay.
And we use federal funds to fund public services and we would get three hundred thousand dollars in requests and we would have like. Hundred thousand dollars and that's figured out, we appointed a council ad hoc committee to go through the application. Interview different nonprofits if they wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've I've done that before, just big staffing.
Sorry. Hey, you're getting it, wait, it's in the next next slide. Okay, cool, thank you.
Uh I am in support of a figure that is closer to. Fifty K for the vehicle.
Yeah, that's 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 my notes as well.
With a stipulation that I don't care what brand um. Although seriously. Excellently designed powertrain. Promise you that um. Stipulation that it be an EV, I. I understand the there are hybrids and things out there, but I think in terms of us continuing to get ahead of the curve on. You know, econo- or. Environmental, sorry, wrong word.
Yes.
If we're gonna make a big purchase, we should be as. As environmentally forward as possible.
You're right, in twenty twenty seven is coming up fast.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be required that we have EVs by that year, so why bother with the hybrid?
Yes, if you're spending the money, if you're writing the check, be as. Economic forward as possible, and I think we setting that number at fifty K gives you a lot of options to go there.
Absolutely, and going to um. Uh three CE who. Who didn't give us. Uh a very big grant for for the street sweeper, which is. Uh uh to me, unbelievable, shocking and so disrespectful, um whatever we can get out of them for for this vehicle. Um I go for it and I'm a hundred percent in support of electric, all electric. And seriously, I'm gonna go to the post office one day for you, pick me to drive, just so I can drive the Tesla. Sorry. City vehicle has a Tesla, go ahead. Keep going, man.
Uh don't have any more questions on this page.
Uh I have one. Sorry, before we move forward, so we don't have to go back. Um the pump for the enterprise fund, um do we choose which fund it's coming out of? When?
When it goes down, yeah. Cause it's on.
First come, first serve.
Um okay, the last one was well.
Yeah, no, 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 sorry, I mean between wastewater and water, because if it's a wastewater pump, we cannot use it for wastewater. But if it's a water pump, we could use it for wastewater.
Um we're talking about a new pump generally.
Ju- okay, oh, right, okay, I was thinking, sorry, I was thinking wheels. Pump standby, got it, understood. Okay, my bad, go for it.
Yep.
Summary.
Yeah, that's it.
Of the uh. Of what the prior pages said. So um so we'll be putting more into the general fund reserve, yes, we've got several things. And I I without taking a vote on each of these line items, I don't know how else to go.
Um I I do have one more question, are you finished with? Your questions? In total? For now, today, no, at this moment, um in in the uh staff report. Under program five, recreation one-time budget catalyst, funding detail. Um I don't know that I have a page three. Um there was a uniform allowance for T-shirts at five thousand dollars for a maximum cost and we budgeted five hundred. Armani. If we're going with Tesla, we might as well be driving with Armani, um right? And it's American. Uh I didn't understand what the five hundred dollar T-shirt allowance was for.
Volunteers.
Um, okay.
This was originally a. The maximum cost estimate came from our little subcommittee on recreation, Kim Callum and others. A year ago. I I might add, if you. Put on summer camps like they often do, a lot of times uh T-shirts are given to the part of the. To the camp, uh day campers or whatever you wanna call them as a. Incentive or whatever, you know, to make them. And usually you get that back because you charge a a a fee to those. So it's kind of a wash.
The one thing we didn't bring forward was revenue, um recreation revenue, you know, we we made seven hundred bucks on speed dating. Um and and Jose Aranda paid for the drinks. So.
Okay. Uh, okay, um. The climate action plan. Uh are we not picking off, piggybacking off of the county's plan?
Yes, we have the opportunity to do that, um that project uh came. To be after our budget was adopted, so there is an opportunity, we have budget money set aside for a climate action plan.
Okay.
That was in the original slide, right? That's the next one. Climate action plan number seven.
There it is.
Yeah.
Okay, and okay. Uh okay, I'm good. No more questions, thank you. Ask away.
Last question, um you'd mentioned something about the strategic plan that we had was from twenty fifteen. But I was under the impression that we hired City Gate last year. To come up with a strategic plan of sorts.
Um well, I was referring specifically to an economic development strategy, an economic development strategic plan.
Okay, cause I think within their their. Their uh report, they did have that element in there, if I don't, if I.
They outlined uh they outlined a whole section in public safety, they outlined a whole section in economic development, and in economic development. Um they talked about the need for a position uh which wasn't funded. Um a part-time position, and they also outlined the need for a new economic development strategy. And um so it's not a duplication, it's a whole separate.
Yeah, general um recommendations to move forward with. Something more detailed.
More spe- more specific.
Okay, thank you.
Uh sorry, one other question, uh do we have a an idea? From the sheriff when we might get a second deputy?
It sounded like the recruitment was going better, um last time I talked to uh. Uh our dedicated deputy, it sounded like um they were filling a lot of positions. But I didn't get a, I haven't asked specifically that question, so I can.
Okay. Just, thank you. Uh, okay.
Bring to their attention that we adopted a resolution requesting one more than a year ago.
Okay, uh any uh any further questions from the council at this moment? Uh questions, comments, concerns from the public, please. No?
Okay.
Thank you.
We did have a hand raised, uh um Carl Vonk.
I hope we didn't, they're asleep. Hey, Carl, welcome.
Hi, thank you, I'm still here. This is, this is boring. Anyway, uh I have a two comments under Capital Outlay. Uh one regarding the vehicle, we just attended the car show at the Santa Clara Convention Center last Saturday. And there are plenty of cars, different brands between thirty and forty thousand. But I might wanna recommend to you the Chevy Bolt, B O L T. The base model is twenty eight thousand, it's all electric. My cousin bought one, I think, two years ago now, and she just loves it. So that's when, if you're trying to save money and want all electric, that might be something you wanna check out. Uh and of course, there are a lot of EVs out there right now. Uh the other m- matter under capital outline or outlay has to do with the Luck Museum. Which is a city-owned building. Uh the Luck Museum is in desperate need of renovation. There are stress cracks in the floor, in the walls, uh there's a broken window. And it just needs to be renovated and restored, it is one of our historic buildings. So I wanna bring that to to your attention, it's it's really getting to be in very bad shape. And those are my two comments for Capital Outlay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other? Hands?
No further comments.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I wanted to second the comments about the the Luck Museum, I. Even if we can't do it all, we should.
We we did set money aside in the CIP, so I didn't bring the CIP to you. Well, maybe it's in the back of your uh resolution, but I believe Luck Museum is set aside.
I thought I saw that somewhere.
If I may add, we should probably get some engineering estimates uh uh on a couple of the repairs and prioritize them. Cause EJ's right, we can't do them all right now, but we can attack the the most pressing. And 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 start there, but we need, we need a ballpark estimate to kind of budget.
For for the Luck Museum? Yeah, um and and one thing we need to keep in mind also is um. That it is a historic building and we are asking everybody else who owns. Or have recently purchased to um restore their buildings, and so uh I think the city needs to um. Yes, thank you.
So we have, we have fifteen thousand. Budgeted for an assessment of the building itself, as as Ms. Von points out, it's structural integrity and its slab and other things. So we did CIP twenty three oh three, that's fifteen thousand set aside just for an assessment.
And and you do talk about it on page four.
We should probably get going on that.
Uh, thank you, um okay, so um. This is an action item, um Don, I saw you taking copious notes, um Liz, I saw you typing copious notes. Um so uh. If we can have a uh motion to approve the resolution amending the budget for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. As indicated, to reflect higher than expected revenues, savings and several new projects and studies. To be initiated before the end of fiscal year, June thirtieth. With uh to include the elimination of the code enforcement officer position. Uh hold a spot for the five thousand um dollar for the Leadership Institute. To reduce. Um from seventy three or seventy eight thousand, the electric vehicle down to seventy thousand, and you already have the CIP. To fifty, sorry, I wrote fif- I have fifty in my notes. Thank you. Whatever you wanna spend on, I have at it. Uh to fifty thousand and the Luck Museum's already in the CIP, um is there anything I missed?
Yes, you um. Council member EJ. Now, yeah, myself, um discussed the just vision increasing. The red tax dollars. He thought about overlapping some ashtray part.
Right.
So I don't know what this office assistant coming on board for. Time, that sounds like something to get any feeling, so I'm not real keen on that part of it, but we need to look at that.
Well, we're coming up on the summer quickly, I mean, because it's almost March now, a- and planning for the summer camps and stuff. She is gonna be.
Right.
Paramount in her job, and, and that's, and she's gonna need more hours to do that, uh, uh, and that's, that's pure recreation, that's not. Oh, speed dating or, 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 or messing with the whatever else you're talking about.
Cross talk away, be nice.
Yeah, I agree with you, because I think that's what I'd like to see, is the focus be on actual activities with the groups that we intended. Youth, seniors, and in-between, not so much with admin work, but I know that she needs the extra hours to get that stuff going. But we are looking at hiring a part-time office assistant. Right?
Right.
So, a- and I think, um, I think part of this is also, I just lost all my notes, oh, here it is, uh. The programming that, that we're purchasing, that the council approved in the January council meeting. Uh, incorporates the permitting for special events. Um, currently, the special events fall under the city manager, and as soon as this program gets up and running, it will fall under Parks and Rec. Um, which will increase, uh. Uh, which will increase revenue, which will, um. Take more time. Um, so I, I'm, I'm all in favor of, of having a, a thirty-hour work week for. For that position. Um, and if we wanna, I don't. I don't know that we can do a sidebar note on that, a sidebar vote.
It, it sounds like we're all in agreement on the hours.
It's just the timing.
It's not the timing, it's the job duties, but.
Yeah. What's priorities?
Acting her job duties is not our job, is done.
Yeah.
Right.
I was just making suggestions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, now I wanna see more programs too, that was my intention, was to get more programs, to get more people served. Increase our service numbers.
Yeah.
And I sensed momentum, so I was trying to tease that.
It's the spring and summer when that's with.
Well, that's a good point, yeah.
So I don't think there's actually any disagreement here.
Yeah, I don't either. Okay, uh, did I miss anything else, Don? That we needed to add? Or change?
Um. We're gonna postpone the five thousand for public safety and let the coordinator decide and come back with the budgets, uh, if they need. Communications equipment, if they need uniforms, training, that kinda thing. Um.
Let them decide.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll have Leadership Academy come back and present for more details, we're not gonna fund the mandala, at least not tonight. And that's the only thing I see questioning, uh, and we reduce the vehicle, so. Okay.
Okay. Uh, with all of those additions, subtractions. Uh, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, uh. A motion, uh, with all of the additions and subtraction made by, uh. Councilmember Sebastian, seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, that was boring, as Carl said. Quite important.
Thanks, Carl.
You, I identified the nerd in me, that's the stuff I like to do, so. You. I identified the nerd in me, that's the stuff I like to do, so. Right.
Okay, discussion items, uh. Focusing on the downtown parking management plan, vacancy ordinance, and facade improvements. Oh, uh, thank you, city manager.
Mayor, Mayor Potem, Jordan, you, um, had called me and, and asked. That we have a conversation about these critical elements related to our downtown. Um. And I've brought forward some, some history that we have in these conversations. Um, perhaps for Councilmember Sebastian and, and Morris Lopez, they hadn't seen the parking study that was commissioned back in twenty-twenty. It's not a lot of detail, and it requires a lot of, uh, uh. Willingness by our property owners downtown to work with the city. It also requires, uh, I believe, paid parking. Because you need a way to, to finance, uh, the infrastructure improvements, and you don't wanna just rely on parking tickets for that, it wouldn't be very popular. So, so whether it's a dollar an hour or some nominal price, uh, but at least something on the coffers to help pay for parking improvements, so. Now that we will have a, a full-fledged enforcement, you know, when I brought this to the council in twenty-twenty, we didn't have very good enforcement. Um, and so enforcement is a critical tool, because if you can set out parking regulations, you gotta be truthful about it. So, um, so that's where we were, and, and we can. Take this to another level, there's a, a lot of different scenarios in the staff report, there's a lot of detail. Number of spaces that could be added for the land value and the adjusted cost, and the cost per space ranging from six thousand dollars to, to seventy-one hundred dollars per space. If you include the land value, if we can get a, a lease or something like that, then we can reduce those costs. But that's, it's a, it's a business model, uh, the, the parking, uh, program is a business model. It's a base for itself over a thirty-year life role. I guess, um. Is there a, is there a parking problem downtown? I guess that's my question, and is it worth all, uh, uh, the struggle and investment and expense? Um, so that, that's, that's my position on, on parking. Um, is now the best time to do that? Do we have a parking problem downtown now on occasion? Um, even with Second Street closed and Warner Brothers here. And then, um, in twenty-twenty-two, we wrote about vacancy tax options, this was a request of Councilmember Freeman. Um, I had an associate, uh, who had done a lot of work on this, and so I asked him to put this report together. Um, there, uh, there's, there's a vacancy tax, this is so, so when a property remains vacant for more than six weeks or six months. The city has the ability to tax the property owner as a form of incentive. Uh, and it becomes a special tax, which is allowable under Prop thirteen, so it would take a, a tax ballot measure to be voted on by the, by the public. Um, I give you, I gave you an example of, um. Um, how Santa Cruz voters were considering that measure in November twenty-twenty-two, and so was the Council of West Hollywood. Um, so it was a trend back in twenty-twenty-two to have a vacancy tax. Oakland's policy has several exemptions, especially for low-income property owners. Um. Uh, and exceptional specific circumstances listed in the staff report. So, uh, this is a ballot measure, and it would be appropriate to begin working on that now, if we wanted a November ballot measure on a vacancy, property vacancy tax. There is a calendar in here, we would just slide it, slide it forward to, uh, to a March one deadline to, to get to a November ballot measure. So, um. I provided those two items, and then, in my own personal experience, when redevelopment used to exist. We had a pretty good facade grant program to help business owners fix up their facades. And if they would put in, uh, a couple thousand dollars, and the city would put in a couple thousand dollars. And we would fix up the facade of their buildings, and it's true in our downtown, as it was in Salinas. That the business owners have facades that protrude over the rideaway, so in exchange, we give an easement. That, that allows us to, to control, uh, what they're doing over the rideaway. That was a real issue, for example, with Casa Rosa, with the, uh, that moving unstable, the second story deck, and so. Um, to get an easement from the property owner so that we did, we could do work and, 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 uh. Well, John, I understand, we were talking about it lunch today, it's, it's just one thing you do in exchange, but you end up with a better-looking building and a fresh-cut paint.
Yeah, thank you, um, for putting this, bringing this forward, um, and the reason I, I asked for it to be on the agenda was. Uh, I looked down Third Street one day, and the whole cityscape just blended right into the, to the brown hillside. Um, and it was kind of, um, disheartening. Um. We have several buildings that have, um, uh. On their own, redone them, Emily did the, Emily Rensel did the Adobe. Uh, Eighteenth Barrel did their building, and Akas did their building, uh. Uh, Julian Ponse did the Bluebird. Uh, I apologize for any building that I have forgotten, the Plaza Market was done. Um. Uh, no, it was just done.
Well, Casa Rosa is pink.
And the, I, uh, the concert, Casa Rosa is, is, um, partially all one color, including the windows. Um. So, uh, building owners are, are doing their part, but then there's other building owners who, who, who don't. Um, and I don't know if it's a lack of caring or a lack of funding, but I'm all for, uh. Um, a percentage from the city, um, as long as it's, um, smaller than the percentage of the building owner. And the vacancy tax, we have talked about, uh, on several meetings for several years. And when there's at least three storefronts on every block on either side that are vacant. Why do people come to this city? Um, and hearing from most business owners and most, uh. Both retail and, uh, hospitality. Uh, they're cutting their hours, they're not coming in, they're not opening their stores because there's no people here. Um, but I, I don't know that we have the, the support of our building owners. To have enough for people to come into this city to look at. Um, and then parking. Uh, when, when we give out parking tickets during an event. Because there's no place to park, and people are, are touching a red zone or touching a crosswalk, um. Uh, you know, hey, come to San Juan, we're open, come to our wonderful event, and by the way, we're gonna give you a parking ticket for a, attending this festival. Um. That doesn't float well in, in my book, um. So, having parking spaces, I mean, we did the parking plan a long time ago with Harrison Associates, and. Um, I, I know that all of these spaces are owned by other folks. Um, who refuse to open them up during, during these events. Um, they alone could be charging for, for parking to, for when folks come in, um, so. I don't know if it could be a shared expense or not, and instead of having a person, one person come. Uh, you know, every so often, and chalk wheels. To see if their parking meter has expired, if we do kiosks, like. The city of Monterey, uh, when we attended that conference for the League of Cities. You pay five bucks and you can stay there all day, or, or eight dollars and you can stay all day. Um. And again, it probably wouldn't be supported by locals who would prefer to bike or ride or walk to a city event, or even downtown. Uh, just for dinner, um, but during events, um, or. Um, you know, everybody else, the sixty thousand who come to see the mission every year could, could park in these. Um, and, and perhaps do, um. Uh, issue permits to every resident in the city, I, I don't know what the answer is, I just think. Um, to me. Uh, some days our city looks sad, and I would love to see a spit shiny polish on it, and. Uh, and get our, our buildings full and our properties that are downtown vacant with a building on it. I mean, why buy a piece of property in the middle of the city and, and not do anything with it? Um, and, and maybe there are plans for it, we just don't know about it. Um, but there have been, uh, for years and years, um, storefronts that face Third Street vacant. Um, so I appreciate it coming before the council for a discussion, so, John, if you wanna chime in, have at your best self.
Sure, th- th- there's a lot to unpack here, uh, I'd li- like to start with, uh, parking, because, um. It, it's kind of been a, uh, upsetting to me for a long, long, long time, there's, um. It's apparent to me that people in San Juan don't even value what they have, because they're. They just let the land sit there and be unused, or not try and generate any money for themselves off of it. Um, uh, the parking lot behind the bank, which is. Lois's, which is now closed, and, and, and the parking lot right across the street from that, uh, uh, next to Smoke Point. It's a perfect example, those people could be making money, and, and they, they're, they're either too lazy or. Or not aware enough to do it, I'm, I'm, uh, you know, it, it kinda upsets me because. Those are good parking slots and good parking spaces that could contribute.
Perfect. What's it called when the government takes property?
Kara, car, sorry, Kara, can you please mute yourself?
What's that called? eminent domain?
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry, John, go ahead.
And to follow up with Kara, yes, we could use the eminent domain, it costs quite a bit of money and takes quite a bit of time, because it's a legal process. Not a, not a political one, um. But, um. We, we need, we need to start, uh, valuing our town, and. Uh, there's a lot of other things that are, uh, that are at play here, um. Uh, if you walk into places, o- other places, other towns, um. Santa Cruz, even, even San Jose, and I'm not even gonna go into the big cities like Oakland or San Francisco, but. But, uh, uh, others, San Jose's probably big, but, you know, they have a lot of vacancies also, uh, and. And retail has changed, um, you know, um. Most of us probably got Amazon packages the past week or two, or, or some of us get Amazon packages every day. Um, so, tha- that's changed, that's changing, uh, retail, and. I, I'm, I'm not, I don't know how to change that, I don't know how to counteract that, other than make our city really an attractive place to visit. Places like Carmella have done it because they're just concentrating on food and wine, or food and drink. Um, not so much, they used to have really high-end dress stores down there and clothing stores, and. I see that some of them have changed over to restaurants or bars now, so. Uh, it's, it's affected them too, um. But I, 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 I think, uh, if we can start with what we can control, which is parking, maybe we can make life a little better, and then. The merchants can pick up on us and, and do a little better. That's all for now.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes, before I was elected to sit here, I always thought about vacancy. You know, it, it, I mean, it's, you buy a property on a historic street like our small town. There's certain, um, responsibilities you have as a property owner. And it should be very clear from the city, and I think we also have to enlist the HRB, you know, the Planning Commission. Um, with those building codes and ordinances and requirements, and I feel like we've been really lax. Even beyond, uh, Third Street, when we have. Empty housing, we sit here and we talk about our housing element and need for more housing and affordable housing, and I. Drive around town and I see on certain streets, there's vacant homes, boarded-up windows, so. There's a lot more to unpack, like, um, Councilmember Freeman said. Uh, you know, beyond Third Street, but we're gonna focus on Third Street and the vacancy tax, I think. You know, if you buy the property, I don't think the city should always have to. Pay the, at our expense, because they are property owners on a very, you know, it's investment. Um, maybe we can point them in the direction of, of their historic buildings to communicate with our consultant. Um, the, uh, historical architect. That gives us, um, information and feedback and consultation. The HRB, you know, go after grants and funding to help them, it shouldn't always be the city that's paying out. Um, they have a responsibility as a property owner on an important street in our town, I feel. Um, the parking, if we don't get those buildings, um, you know, filled up with, with viable, vibrant businesses. I don't see the, I don't think I would wanna pay a parking fee if half the town is empty. And the buildings are flooded and the paint's peeling. Um, I'm glad that the movie crew is here, because that kinda leads to that, I mean, I drive past that. Plaza, and I look at the delivery stable, and it's. Got like rotting wood on it, and it's falling apart, so if we're gonna charge parking fees. We need to really, you know, provide something for our visitors, and the other issue I see. Is that I understand people have to unload their cars when they own a business downtown. is that I understand people have to unload their cars when they own a business downtown. But when you park your car there for eight hours that your shop is open, you've just, you know, impacted one parking for tourists. So I don't know, maybe there could be like a business or store owner's parking lot, like, yeah, go unload your stuff. But maybe have a parking lot so that we free up the main street uh, and not, and hold off on charging parking, except maybe on those special events. Until we get everybody on board to really spruce up their their facades. Um, you know, it it's complicated and like, um, Councilmember Freeman said, it's not brick and mortar anymore, you know, there's Amazon, there's online shopping, but we're not that kind of town. We have to really capitalize on our tourism, our specialty shops, if it's hospitality. You know, whatever it is, we're not gonna be, okay, we're gonna go into a hardware store and buy nuts and bolts. That's not us anymore. You know, that that day, that train left the station when the cement pad closed. So, um, and then as far as these property owners that seem rather stingy, I kind of think like maybe part of it is they have to really spend a lot of money on insurance policies. Um, you know, that may be something that they don't wanna do, so they chain up their lot. Um, but maybe having re- having the conversation with them again, so the city can be a partner with these property owners, so that we kind of absorb some of the the responsibility, you know, might be one way to do it. But we just have to put our heads together and think about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers.
Caught me in the middle of note taking, but, um, my sorry, my preference, uh, in terms of priority would be the vacancy ordinance, um, a form of parking management plan and then if we have ordinance and or recommendation for facade and for 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 facade improvements, I I or some sort of reinforcement there, I'm not real interested in in, nobody's helping pay me pay my house, so.
Absolutely.
She's not interested in 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 spending our our city money, tax money, other people's money on on helping people, you know, unless they wanna start selling off percentages of what they own in exchange for that. I'm not interested in that. That's just my personal opinion. Um, I think we're the four of us are kind of circling around a general agreement on general everyday parking not being an issue. Um, and that the issue is more for special event parking. I think it might be, um, useful to roll in some language into a vacancy ordinance around parking for special events. And maybe we attack it that way, but I don't think there needs to be some, it kind of sounds like we're all saying we don't need some great parking initiative with machines and things and or all that, um, but attacking where the issue actually is right now and trying to roll something into a vacancy tax. And then backing up, like I said, I think my priority is the some sort of vacancy and use ordinance, getting that in front of voters, you know, this this year, this go round. I think that's for me, that's priority, like what whatever that language looks like, how we how we get to that, um. That's something I don't want, I don't want to delay or have the ball dropped on.
I I agree, tha- that's gone on for I don't know how long some of them have been vacant, years, fi- over five for a lot of them.
Yeah, it's 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 the owner's prerogative if they wanna do that, but, um, those businesses and those spaces, those properties should be of use in our in our downtown. And if the way they want to be of use is to pay a tax to have it empty.
Totally fine.
We'll get with that.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with that. Yeah, uh, and as far as parking management, I I'm all for that too, starting out slow. Um, and and we didn't have enforcement on parking a long time ago because we as a city chose not to give that authority to our um, security company when, um, before we had uh, code enforcement. Um, and there was not very much of a sheriff, um, presence. Um, and now that we have, I'm I'm not sure that that it's even working, um, properly. Um, so, yeah, I'm all for doing, um, starting the vacancy uh, tax language now to get it on the ballot. Um, it it really is sad that we don't have, and and there might not be, I mean, people have to decide for themselves what kind of brick and mortar they wanna have. Um, and hopefully, they, um, they will see this quaint little Third Street community and say, San Juan's a great place to open up a brick and mortar and this is a really cool idea that I'm gonna have. I mean, we've lost so many just in the last year because, um, I I don't know why, because there's nobody downtown supporting them and and I don't wanna lose anymore because of that. Um, a lot of them were best of that we lost, the the ones that we, out of the ones that we did lose, most of them were the best of San Benito County. And that's a shame that that we lost them and they went to uh, another street that was visited more often. Um, so getting getting something in here sooner than later, as far as a vacancy tax ordinance, um, the better. Um, and for facade improvements, you know, I said that uh, a couple of years ago. I I'm not gonna help you pay and and it seemed like uh, that was the big thing. Um, if you want my building painted in to look nice, throw me over some bucks. Okay, wait, what? Uh, so, uh, putting that further down, but golly, if everybody else in in this city would uh, follow suit like the ones that have painted theirs, um, to improve the look, uh, all the better.
I I might add, um, I suggested a vacancy tax quite a while ago and and I'm still in favor of it, but I wanna remind the council that there's two ways to make a donkey or people do things, uh, the carrot and the stick. And and we are using the stick with a parcel tax, okay, so you might hear from it, from your friends and 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 business people, they might object, um. I I I'm just throwing that out there.
Um, absolutely, but what's the carrot?
The carrot would be for us to do some economic development to make people want to come here. Right now, there's not a big enough draw to make people want to come here, um. And we kind of, San Juan has to collectively, and I don't think we can done at the council level, it needs to be done kind of almost organically, decide what it wants to be, if it if it wants to be a culinary destination like a lot of places are, um, we probably need some more restaurants and and higher end restaurants, um. Uh, when I first moved here, there was quite a few more restaurants here. They weren't necessarily higher end, but some of them were, um. Cutting Horse comes to mind, Fault Line comes to mind, and 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 there was others, uh, yeah, 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 so. So we have, we, there, in periods of San Juan history in the past, we've actually had more restaurants than what we have now, so. Uh, uh, and at the same time, I was talking to a a a restaurant food critic here in 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 San Benito County, and he was telling me that all the restaurants everywhere he goes, and that includes Monterey, Santa Cruz, San Jose, Hollister, San Juan, they all have the same thing. There's not enough people coming out to dine. And the food prices, their wholesale food prices have gone up. And also their their wage, the wages they have to pay to the people have gone up by four or five bucks an hour, or by twenty percent. And so that's squeezed them to many times they've gone out of business. I I heard a statistic, I don't know if it's true because it was on the TV and not from an official source, but but like thirty percent of the restaurants in San Francisco are now gone. So, I I.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, but that carrot uh, is is years down the road, um, and and maybe the stick before that, like the Cutting Horse or the Fault Line who have been uh, closed with nothing in them, I mean, change the floor plan then and put something else if you don't wanna put a restaurant. Um, I mean, it would have been really nice to have a steakhouse here or uh, the Fault Line Reimagined, which was talked about, uh, two years ago when, uh, then Assembly Member Rivas was running for office or four years ago. Um, so, yeah, I I I agree with the carrot, it it's, um, I don't know, it hasn't happened, uh, it hasn't happened thus far, and perhaps having a stick in front of that carrot would incentivize them.
There absolutely has to be a penalty for just leaving things.
I I agree, a hundred percent, a hundred percent. So I think the stick has to come first in this case.
I also wanna add what I originally stated about the residential homes that are boarded up and vacant for years.
Yeah, some of the same owners. Yeah, I agree with that as well. Uh, we have, uh, inventory. But no incentive to, I I don't, I don't know if it's if you get money for for having your home vacant, more money than what you would could potentially get. I I have no idea, but, yeah, kind of crazy. Uh, so, um, direction to staff would be to go forward with a uh, vacancy tax. Um, ordinance gets something on the ballot, uh, for November. Um, and then we'll work on parking management and a facade improvement program.
I would still love to roll parking for special events into that.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely. Yeah, if, uh, I mean, seven years ago, uh, uh, the city spoke to Kathleen Manning, asking for the property across from the Valero Gas Station. We mowed it and they all, uh, and it was open for parking for, uh, the Arts and Crafts Fair and the Rib Cook Off. Um, uh, the parking was free, um, uh, even to, uh, I I I don't even know how to 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 use those vacant lots, um, adequately, but, um, we have to go up slightly. Even Lois offered all of the downtown uh, merchants, uh, the ability to park in her sh- her lot for nothing. And they still chose to park in front of their storefronts, which took up a a prime real estate for a tourist. Um, disconcerting. Um, so, yeah, something, something has to be done with business owners and and, um, uh, I mean, there was a great cooperat- uh, cooperative effort, um, that was attempted and our business owners didn't didn't chime in. I I don't, I don't know. Uh, okay, anything else for the good of the?
I I, go ahead, you.
I have a question, um, Mayor, um, Jordan. So you directed staff to bring this back as a possible initiative for November. Does this require some public, um, discussion, or are we able to decide on this? I'm gonna ask our attorney. What's the process on this?
There's a whole process. If you look at the staff report, it talks about, uh, ten days for rebuttal and and there'll be public hearings and there's a whole public process.
Yeah.
We went through this on the Canada Store, no? By the way, it passed by seventy percent, remember? Well, because there's no lamp. Yeah.
Uh, okay, um, future agenda items?
Uh, Mayor, before you proceed.
Sorry.
We do have, um, a hand raised.
Oh, I apologize.
I don't know whether Chambers has comments.
Uh, okay. Uh, okay, uh, Zoom land? She's unmuted. Uh, Kara's on it. You have three minutes.
Here, okay. Um, just addressing the facade improvement, uh, improvements. I understand our housing element will be approved or submitted, uh, recently, or I'm sorry, coming up. Um, and, uh, then I think we would be eligible for grant funding from that agency community development and housing, whatever it is. Um, and I know in the past, in another city where I used to live, uh, they did have a facade improvement, uh, program for their downtown. And what they did is they made available low-cost loans so that, uh, owners who wanted to, you know, could paint and do whatever. So that might be a way that we could get those facades in improved. If the city set up some kind of a, uh, you know, low-cost loan program. And, um, I totally support the vacancy tax. I think parking generally should be free. Um, and maybe the city can talk about insurance if that's the issue with th- those folks who own lots. And, you know, are concerned about people parking there. Those are my only comments. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, future agenda items. Anything, John?
Um, it's kind of following up on what we just talked about, but, uh, I'd like to see parking with E V chargers and that would bring people in. Um, I just had a report given to me a while back that half of all cars sold in San Mateo County and forty percent sold in in Santa Clara County are now E Vs. Those are the people who we wanna attract as tourists. Who wanna, we want to eat in our restaurants and eat in the Cutting Horse when it eventually comes back and the Fault Line and all these other places. Um, a- and if we can put, uh, uh, a parking lot with an E V charger, then they can sit there and charge and eat a steak at the same time and and I think that's a a a an economic development draw, a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Nice, thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. So I wanna start with something that I feel that really gives back to the community members. I was, um, sent an email as a city councilperson with a resident that was concerned about the new, um, or maybe it was an existing ordinance, uh, talking about the water bill and the ordinance for late and past due. Um, I think we really need to discuss that and bring it on the agenda. Also, the concern, and I've had this concern, I've been bringing it up for a while about looking at the service that we use now, that charges a percentage of our total water bill, if you wanna use the, um, the convenience of paying online versus coming in. So I think we really need to look at that and make some changes. Um, I haven't looked at my current water bill. Uh, but I believe that there was a letter that was mailed out, if I'm not mistaken. That's what was brought to my attention. I think we all got the same email. Um, so that's on the priority. I'd like that to be addressed immediately, next meeting, some discussion. And then the other thing, we talked about parking and about the downtown look. Well, we have now since removed parklets that no longer qualify to be in existence. So why do we have all these wine barrels with succulents now? They impede on some left-hand turns onto the Third Street. They also impede and take up parking spaces. So I think we need to look at that. Um, and I know a place that might welcome a donation of some of those. The barrels.
So we're returning two-way streets?
Yeah, that would be a whole conversation on two-way versus one-way, and we still have parklets in town, so.
Because making left turns from some of the ancillary streets where there no longer is a parklet, that those barrels are kind of protecting the parklet, um, inhabitants. Uh, they're just really tight. They make it a tight left turn and they're taking it up from parking. So I think we need to really start talking about that.
So you wanna return the two-way streets?
We can't discuss that right now.
Talking about the, for future, the, at least the barrels, we need to remove some of them. There's three always and they stick out, they impede parking, they impede making a good left turn.
Um, and then.
We could have that as a discussion item.
And then last, I wanted to talk about, because we are talking about our tech wreck. Um, what, and I know that our, one of our former mayors is, um, working really hard with the seniors in town, so that's just something I wanna just find out what's going on and how can we help them. That's that's a group of individuals that I think we really need to we need to nurture in our community, their wealth of a living history. And what can we do to help them more as a city? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on that note, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, I am so sorry. Again, I did that. Wow, I gotta do it once a year. That's my last one for you. I got no more.
Can we, for future agenda items, can we put the two approvals that Mrs. Baines was was has submitted on the agenda? On the agenda for next go round?
Yes, yeah, that's already coming up.
The reports are already written.
So I got.
Awesome.
Now.
Now, I don't have anything for future agenda items. I don't, I I had my mouth full, I had three of them on this one, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, a motion to adjourn by Councilmember Sebastian, seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez, may I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan? Yes, nine forty-nine. Yes.
I drank my hot cocoa with weed.
Thank you very much, thank you all.